Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, as we gather today, we ask a special blessing for our leaders of our country, these trying times dealing with a pandemic and all the social unrest. These are the times that we really need to reach out to you. Also, Lord, be with us today as we go about the county business. Give us strength and wisdom on making the right decisions for the taxpayers of Finy County. Also, Lord, we desperately need moisture in this country. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Good morning, all. It's nice to see people in the audience here today. Great, great. Love it. We have quite an agenda today, a lot of business to conduct, so I'm going to limit conversations or inputs to 10 minutes. You will be on the clock. So, having said that, I welcome all of you. Anybody in the room that has public comment before that is not on our agenda, yourself, please speak up. And seeing nobody waving madly, I will ask, we have some public comment from the county, from the audience. I'll be going to ask our county clerk or a member to read the ones we have on hand.
Okay. The first is from Haley Noel, Garden City. Is it true there has not been adequate drinking water for an entire portion of our, of Allen County for over 40 days? What is being done about this crisis in an immediate, long-term plan?
We will answer these after the rest of them.
Okay. The next is from Sherry Dressel, Garden City. Two questions. One, why are the commissioners willing to let businesses open up but the county offices will remain closed? That sends a rather mixed message, I believe. Two, what if anything is being done about the water situation at Towns River View? For almost a month, their water has been deemed unsafe for consumption. I assume proper steps are being taken. If there is some type of complication, please share with residents. The third is from Gretchen Dunker, Garden City. Question is for Mr. Montfisney. The community outreach committee at St. Catherine Hospital has delivered donated bottled water to Towns River View on three different occasions due to the boil water advisory that was issued at the beginning of May. There are multiple families without dependable running water. Handing out bottled water is like putting a Band-Aid on a gunshot wound. And while the District One Commissioner refuses to listen to medical advice otherwise, I'm asking him to take my word for it, that this analogy implies that what has been done is not a sustainable solution. When will the help to hold, when will he help to hold the landlord accountable for this issue? Are there resources available for him to get this fixed? How do we expect citizens in our county to stay safe, pandemic or otherwise, without reliable and clean running water? Can he at least let us know how much more bottled water we will need to acquire as a hospital, community outreach committee, and county health coalition? And how many more times would he like us to deliver it? Can we call him to help us with either donation or delivery next time? Or can he help with a long-term solution?
All right. Thank you for those inputs. I'm going to tackle the easy one. Why does the commission let the businesses open up but the county offices will remain closed? The county views Mr. Robert Reese, our administrator, as any other business owner. We highly encourage each business owner to do what they feel is best in opening up their businesses as far as the clients they serve and their employees. We feel Mr. Reese is no different, that he has the option to protect his people and his, any kind of taxpayers as he sees fit, just as any other business. That was the easy one.
My comment, Dr. Clifford, on Friday, Commissioner Jones and I, Larry Jones and I, toured the county building. And there are a number of improvements being made that'll improve the citizen experience when they come here, including a cut list system for the treasurer's office and for vehicle registration. So, I agree with your statement that we're protecting our employees, just like other businesses do. But I do think when the citizens return to the building next week, they'll find a much more, much better experience here.
As far as the issue at Towns River View, I'll probably turn this over to Mr. Reese for a professional point. But I do know the Health Department was made aware of this issue, and they are trying. And I'll let you take it from there.
Very good. You're correct. Both the Health Department, Public Works, you're senatorial, and Emergency Management have been working the issue. I'm going to look here at John to maybe provide an update on that status. If you could do that for us, John.
John, would you please come forwards to the mic so everybody else can hear you, please? John Yellerman is a lucky man in charge of this.
I'm not, actually.
No? All the way up here.
Mr. Chairman, after he comments, I can tell you.
Yeah, you were addressed directly, so.
Yeah, I have quite a few answers for being asked.
I don't have a lot of input, other than I shared our participation in a conference call with the Health Department and KDHE hospital staff was, those that were delivering water were on that call, too. He is being monitored as far as pressures on the system. That's the main issue is what he has is not enough pressure into the system to provide the best water possible. I think he has been addressed to start a plan, get a plan together, gather an engineer, and do what he has to do to, to see what he has to do to fix that problem. Last, we are still in KDHE, is the muscle behind it with some help from our local Health Department, helping enforce and encourage that the fix to happen.
You summed it up. KDHE is the muscle.
KDHE right now is the muscle.
Mr. Fisney?
Mr. Chairman, for those on the phone line, this is Long, and it is my district. A couple of quick things to put it into context. There's two subdivisions at Towns River View. There's one called Towns River View, in which I live, and there's Towns River View South. There's 85 residents approximately, residences approximately in Towns River View and 125 in the mobile home Towns River View South. This has been an ongoing issue for years. We, as a homeowners association, in our subdivision, have been very concerned about the water supply. It came to a head a couple of years ago, I believe, John, or maybe three, when Delmer had a boil advisory because of his wells not providing quality water. And at that point, Delmer Towns was given an option by KDHE to either put a filter system in or hook into city water. He hooked into city water, and that's been connected about a year, maybe a little bit over, John, if you recall when that was. But not too long ago that took place. Subsequent to that, there's been all kinds of issue with the pressure. KDHE requires at minimum 20 pounds of pressure to circulate the water, to eliminate bacteria and so forth. And at our end, at the Towns River View end, that pressure is around 60 pounds. At the mobile home end, it is 20 or less, in some cases, eight or nine pounds. So, a couple of months ago, maybe, is when KDHE issued a boil water advisory. And when they do that, they issue it for both subdivisions, even though it's Towns River View South that's having the issue. Then recently, there was an emergency order issued toward Delmer Towns. That said, your pressure's too low. You've got to get something fixed. And there's a schedule when he has to have things done. And I didn't bring that calendar with me, but I've got it marked on a calendar. He has to come up with a plan with his engineer, Gerald Edwards, and they have to present that to KDHE. However, a week ago Friday, I believe it was, when he had this conference call, soon after that, Delmer Towns, through his attorney, filed an appeal of this emergency order. And I received a copy of that last Friday. And it's public record, so anything I'm saying here is public information. And that is being appealed. They're awaiting a hearing date. And primarily, that was probably appealed, in my opinion, based on the fact that he would be penalized. It's either $5,000 or $10,000 a day if he misses some of these deadlines. So, right now, it's in the hands of KDHE for the longer-term solution, and that was one of the questions in this email. But we've been working on this for several years. I had a representative out here with me a few weeks ago. We went around and tested some hydrants, visited with some residents. I know our health director, Colleen, and her, one of her nurses, I don't know who it was, were out visiting with residents and finding out what the issues are and talking to them about that. To the other point that was in that email this morning, yeah, the temporary solution is to provide us water and so forth. How long that's going to go on, I don't know. But the long-term solution is in process, and KDHE is in charge of that long-term process. And lastly, I would say, Mr. Chairman, in the order, Delmer Towns was ordered to offer to those residents, in lack of a professional term, porta potties and portable shower units. And he has done that through notices that he posted on doors. However, the notices in the mobile home area where it was needed, those notices weren't posted on every door because of the way the homeowner's addresses are. And that day they posted them, they were blowing off the doors of the ones that were posted. So, there are many people out of those 125 residences in Towns River View South that don't know about the boil advisory or didn't until Colleen and her nurse went out there and told them they were under boil advisory. That's been on for a couple of months. And many of them do not know that they have the offer from the water supply owner for the temporary units. And lastly, Delmer is also under the eye of KCC because he has finally, after years of misunderstanding over the last year, has been deemed a public water supplier and falls under the jurisdiction of KCC from a rate standpoint and so forth and so on. So, he has two regulatory agencies that are looking over his shoulder, plus us and our homeowners association that's doing some on-the-ground labor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I went over my time limit.
Okay. Let's move on. First off, I did fail to give our agenda approved before I opened up the public comment. We need to make a few modifications. On the consent agenda, there is no May 29 minutes for that special session. And then also, under business items, City on the Hill has rescheduled. So, can I have a motion to approve the agenda modified?
Mr. Chairman, Dave speaking, and I'll offer that motion.
Clifford seconds.
Hold those in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving into the agenda, business items, budget requests from the outside agencies. Finy County Conservation District is first, and I see three representatives out there in the crowd, at least three, who is volunteering to come up to the mic? I see Carmen heading this way.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order while they're coming up, could I move to approve the consent agenda?
Good point.
Oh, I thought that's what we did.
We approved the agenda.
Oh, okay. I would, we, oh, he moved on. I would second.
Seconded. We approved the consent agenda. Thank you, Clifford. Hold those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Glad people keep me online here.
No, I can't. I need a part of it, Terry.
Good morning, Carmen.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. And these different times here.
Is it that time of year again? All right.
Right. It seems like it's here all the time.
Your clock is running. 10 minutes.
Okay. Well, of course, I am with the Finy County Conservation District. With me today, I have our chairman, Andrew Larson, our treasurer, Jerry Boling, and then our district conservationist, Amanda Shaw. She's with Natural Resources Conservation District. And so, we're here to request a budget of $30,000 for 2021. With that, that covers all of our operations so that we can function to provide that technical, financial, and educational water and soil conservation, which is kind of ironic that we come up right after we talk about Towns River View. But that's always been, that has been an issue for years.
Are you guys involved with that one as well?
I have not heard, well, with it being through KDHE at this point. It may come into play a little further down the line. But do you guys have any, I used to have an Andy up here with me to help me go through this, so.
He delegated, huh?
Yes, he did. And I offered. So, I'm good with that. I just, you know, it's been a weird, this year has been difficult. We, and a little sad with the COVID, we haven't been able to do a lot of the educational programs that we love to do and that the students love to participate in. However, that's just going to kind of double our load next year. When it comes to our Water Festival, we'll probably hit twice as many kids as we had planned on. But we're going to pick right back up as soon as we can.
Questions for Carmen, Mr. Chairman? Dave with a question, Carmen. Putting our, the record I have before me, your allocation for the current year, or last year's discussion, total 15,000. My memory is different than that. Am I misreading or mis-
Well, and it may have been, some of the forms are a little different. So, that's year-to-date, not what, that's just what we've received so far.
Okay, but didn't we, we appropriated, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did. So, we've only received half of it.
I had an excuse. Dr. Bill Clifford took a cataract off me last weekend, so my glasses don't work.
I'll take it. I'll take it. All right.
Flair.
Carmen, I have a question. I notice your cash balance is fairly high. You know, almost a full year's salary, capital out. Is that normal to keep that much cash on hand?
It normally isn't. Actually, that got down really, really scary low. But there's a few things that we, we have been running on one employee when historically we've had two or one and a half. We've been running on one so that we, because it did get so low, just really stretching as much as we can. And then the other thing is, is we are looking at having to downsize our work area, which means that we may have to, what do I want to say, buy into a storage unit or shipping unit to store a lot of our supplies. Because the building that we're in now, we've cut back on our Farm Service Agency, our Farm Loans, Rural Development, they're no longer present. So, they're going to want us to cut back on that building, which will really cut into our area.
And also, how secure do you think your state fund will be?
I feel our state funds are pretty, are pretty good. You know, there's always some that's up in the air, and there's always people wanting to grab at it. Right now, we are looking at an increase for the state funds. Now, that was talked before COVID, so we will see how that takes place. It doesn't look like it's going to be a big cut at this point. We've got some opportunity to actually help allocate funds. We've already got the computer system, the program set up, so that when we have some programs that the state wants to initiate, we've got that set up. They don't have to go and worry about setting up a whole new system to allocate some of these programs. One of the ones that we did last year was the water irrigation technology, trying to decrease the amount of water that we're using and be wise about that. So, we were able to help implement that program for them without having to create a whole new system and whatnot.
Good. Thank you. Further questions, comments?
Dr. Clifford, I know each year we have to show a certain amount of county due diligence or whatever the word is, to be eligible for the matching funds. Is there a number on that?
25,000.
Okay, because we, I mean, we'll have budget issues here as well at county level. So, when we do see agencies come to us with large cash balances, the temptation is to, you know, for a year at least, dip into that.
Right.
We may have to dip into our reserves. So, if we don't show it, the $25,000 due diligence, we're not going to get the match.
They will, they will match up to 25,000.
Dollar for dollar, or?
Actually, it's kind of a, they kind of prorate it, whatever they have from the state. And then by the, they've got a calculation that's, I think it's by the population of the county.
That's some formula.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the term is maintenance reserve.
There you go. Thank you.
And yeah, if you notice, let's see. So, we're looking at, we've got, we got 30,000 allocated from you guys last year, and we only received 22 from the state when you did the 30. And we're looking at somewhere along the same line there for this year. 22 for the last three years.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to take the Conservation District's budget request under advisement.
Clifford seconds.
Further discussion? Hold those in favor, the motion signify, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
All right. Next on the list is the cost of, here are the findings. All right. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Well, I know you guys all read my reports, and I don't want to just dig into that again. But I have just a couple of things that I'm really proud of that you should know is in 2019, myself and my volunteer coordinator were both trained to be trainers for the cost of training program that we have available. And we also were able to train 15 volunteers, but we only certified 11 of those. Several dropped out after seeing what we were doing and the work that we do. And so, they just said they didn't feel that they could do it. I got to take this off. I can't. I can't even breathe to talk to you guys.
It's a wrong team anyway, Robert.
Yeah, that is, we'll get one, wrong team. I got on Jeremy. I got, got.
Yeah, I couldn't even, I couldn't even read. I was like, I can't talk to you. So, I mean, we're moving right along. We had a training class that was going to start in March that we had to postpone because of COVID. And, but I'm happy to announce that we're starting that class tomorrow. And we'll have a class in June that's going to be five weeks, and we'll train four new volunteers in June. And then again, in July, we'll do another training class. And so far, we have three, but we're doing what's called a virtual recruitment program where I'm doing recruiting online using a GoToMeeting. And so, we're getting people signed up. And then I'll be, just like when I would go talk to one of the social service clubs, I'll be doing the same thing, except doing it virtually. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get some more volunteers for our June, July class and continue to move forward.
How many volunteers would you really like to have? I mean, what's the number, the goal?
Right now, we have 100 kids in our program. And we have 17 volunteers that serve, I think, 47, 47 cases right now. So, the goal is, we need at least 60, 60 to 70 volunteers to meet the needs of all the kids in Finy County. And the growth, the numbers continue to grow. In 2019, there was 174 kids that were taken into police protective custody. And I don't know the numbers as of today because the courts have been closed. And as soon as the courts open up, I'm sure those numbers are going to grow. Also, when school gets back in session, some of the people that made a lot of the reports were educators. And so, when school opens back up, we'll probably see an increase in the number of children that are taken into police protective custody. And as you can see in the budget, I had, I was going to request $20,000, but as Dr. Clifford pointed out, your guys' funding is probably going to be limited as well. So, I had brought it down to 15,000, which is what you guys allocated for us last year, and I wanted to keep it at that same level. So, do you have any questions for me?
I have more of a comment than a question. I noticed last year, if I remember right, last year when you came, or they showed up, that your volunteer list was down to almost nothing.
Yes, sir.
And I see that you had 15. That's, that's, that's great.
Yeah, and we continue to look for volunteers, continue to train them. And it's nice having Debbie as the volunteer coordinator that can do the training locally here for us. The other thing is, that support that we provide for the volunteers, so it's helping us to keep them on longer so that they don't just say, because this is tough work, folks. This is tough work, and if we don't support them, they'll be like, I can't do this. So, one of the things that we really work on is supporting them. And we just wrote a grant to the Attorney General's Office, and I'm hoping that we get that. That's going to give us funding that will provide recruitment as well. that, that will provide recruitment as well as, uh, retention funds to go back, continue that.
I'm also encouraged by the broad base of the collection or revenue sources that you use. Instead of just strictly relying upon taxpayers, it's a lot of philanthropic organizations I think is to be commended.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And, you know, one of the things that we did that was really well was the match day with the Western Kansas Community Foundation. And we had a lot of support there. Uh, we increased from about a fifty-six hundred dollars the year before to twenty, uh, twenty thousand dollars the next year. And so that was, that was a big plus. And we're going to continue to use those platforms to raise the money that we need to continue to support the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Dave. Robert, I'm, I'm still having eye problems apparently because you said you asked for no increase. The figures I have here says you got fifteen thousand current year, asking for twenty next year.
And, and I did. I changed that. I just.
Okay, it's not changing. All right.
Right. I, I changed it after, after, um.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My, Mr. Chairman, my, just a quick comment to, uh, kind of piggybacking on what Larry Jones said a minute ago. I appreciate what you're doing. It appears that if you have fifteen volunteers, you're servicing forty-seven kids. They've got about a three to one ratio right now. And, and I understand how you would want to try to have that less.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I agree with you. After this virus situation is over and things are opened up more, your caseload's going to fill up.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But we'll also be finding those volunteers to take care of those caseloads.
Well, hopefully since this is Facebook with one video, people out in our audience will say, hey, I never thought of that. So perhaps this is a good thing.
Yes, sir.
So for public record, for those on Facebook, your telephone number is?
Six-two-zero-two-seven-one-six-one-nine-nine. Give me a call and I'd love to have you be one of our volunteers.
All right. Further questions, comments?
I move that we take this budget under advisement. And Lon, second.
We move it seconded to take CASA budget under advisement. All those in favor, so you can find a standing aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Compass Behavioral Health. I see Lisa. I see she has some backup probably out there, but she's working her way up. Good morning.
And then it's, you're killing me.
You're killing, yeah.
I kept wondering if I could steal somebody else this time, but I won't. And I'll tag team, um, with Megan because she is the, okay, the, uh, and then I do believe you all have fits in advance, correct?
Not that.
So luckily I did not fill a lot of trees to make these because almost everything has been Zoom or telephone. So very thankful to be here today live. So I'm here as a representative of Compass as a whole. I live here in Garda City, so, um, oh, sorry. I'm so used to respecting six feet. Thank you. Uh, so I will just highlight a couple of things for Compass as a whole. Um, we did work really hard at increasing our services in the schools. Um, and, and we know, I mean, we do have people that are going to come to us. But our best bet at serving people is to go to them, wherever that might be. So that got stifled 2020 with COVID. Um, so we have done a really good job of still taking care of our kids. Um, it's just been by telephone or telehealth or maybe some sort of brief check-in with them and their family. We really work toward, um, increasing our number of mental health first aid classes. The more we can do to educate our community on the signs and symptoms, the better we're going to have at bringing people in, um, for services. And once again, we had a lot of, um, trainings that were canceled because of this, but we will get them back in place. And then finally, the little booklet that you've got on health and wellness for our farmers, um, that became like our 2019 initiative, I guess. It's where we put some focus. And part of that was mental health first aid training. Um, you know, if we can't always reach our farmers, how can we find people they interact with? Physicians, clergy, uh, people who sell insurance. Um, so maybe they can look for those signs and then, um, direct them toward help, whether it's with us or someone else. Other than that, in our Compass booklet is, uh, information on the demographics of people that we serve. We have a lot of great success stories in here. Um, a breakdown of our revenue. Want to be fully accountable to everyone who supports us as to where we get our dollars, how we spend our dollars, and then where our services go in our thirteen counties, um, that we have. It's so interesting that this booklet was put together in January prior to all of this outbreak. And two of the comments that were in here is, one, there's no health without mental health. And I think everyone has really seen that during this time. Um, and then secondly, um, I attended a conference that had to do with farmer's wellness. And the quote was behavioral health is essential to health. Prevention works, treatment is effective and people recover. And again, we, we have been viewed as essential health during this time. So we're very thankful for that and the ability to still serve people, even though it's not been much live. We do hope to be opening more of that up in June and then definitely much more in July while keeping our staff safe and the community safe.
Good morning. My name is Megan Garcia. I'm the Regional Director for Compass Behavioral Health, which also encompasses Finney County. I am also a Finney County resident. I grew up here. My whole family is here. So Finney County is very important to me. Over the past year, we continue to grow and adapt to our changing world. Our services did not stop with COVID. We transferred to a lot of telehealth and the majority of those were actually done by Zoom, Google Duo or FaceTime, actually. Very little of them was actually done over just the telephone unless a patient did not have access to the internet or didn't have a smartphone. We have hired on two new therapists who were interns with us for the past year to year and a half, which is really exciting. We continue to offer same-day, next-day therapy intakes and our services are very accessible. We still have a clinician who is on call every single day of the year, every hour, to provide crisis services as well. We continue to provide live crisis services during COVID. If they walk into our building, we never turned anybody away because we knew that when they were asking for it and asking for help, that was the time to serve. Um, in the past year, we've also started a new initiative to help support, support first responders. So that includes dispatchers, law enforcement, EMS, fire, jail deputies. So they can get five free services if they're struggling with something or anything. Um, that is something that we've been promoting a great deal along with our jury duty services as well. We've noticed that there's a lot of trauma that also comes from being on a jury. These people are exposed to situations and events and stories that they would have never heard naturally. So we actually started reaching out to them as well to provide debriefings or other services as necessary. Does anybody have any questions?
There are always some questions. Okay.
Well, uh, I'm Cliff here. Of course, I'm a part of, uh, the Board of Directors of Compass Mental Health. So I understand their operation intimately. Uh, mental health facilities are a county creation. This is something that we county commissioners or preceding county commissioners did, did create. Uh, so I feel we have a great obligation. It's, it's our duty to public health to maintain their level of functioning. I've been very impressed with how you've been able to maintain services throughout the, uh, the pandemic. I, I know, uh, playing that being a farmer here has plenty of stress in this business. And I appreciate the brochures, but where, where do we, where do we find our, our, our farmers who are, who are under stress? I know suicide on farms, a great concern in, in the conversation before the virus broke out. Where do we go to find folks and reach out?
Prior to COVID, what we started doing is going to the places where we know the farmers meet in the morning for coffee. So we were tracking them down.
They can't hide.
No. Many of us also have family connections. So my family has no prop insurance. So I went there. They were telling me all of the different people they know that are struggling. And we were getting that whole initiative started. We went to the co-ops, we went to a lot of the places and then COVID hit. So it's something that will continue after the restrictions are lifted. But we were going to them because we know as a population, they do not seek us out. They're very private, very stoic. I come from a farming family myself. So I have a lot of connections in farming as well. So we have to go to them because they do not seek out on their own.
I kind of feel like I'm in the hot seat here. Okay, go ahead.
So that's, we go to them to find them. So we have been diligently tracking them down until COVID started. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I was just, this is Lon for those on the line. Uh, you have two others here who have agricultural roots. And yes, it's a very proud independent bunch and they're not going to seek out help. And, and I know that from, uh, from experience. My question is, uh, and it's on the back of here, suicide. It's, you know, is there a suicide, and maybe I should have asked this of Lisa, but either a suicide hotline or something? And have you seen any increased activity as far as calls into that line? Help, help us understand that because I hear statewide and nationally that the suicide hotlines have been, the, the numbers of calls have increased, but I haven't heard locally.
So yes, there is a suicide prevention hotline and our phone number is actually answered 24 hours a day. And then you'll get a therapist that is dispatched to help you with your crisis. We have seen the same volume pretty much for crisis that we normally do. Finney County tends to be a little bit higher on the crisis side when compared to other counties that I've seen in our local area. What we've actually seen though is the severity of the crises tend to be a lot stronger. Very strong psychosis, very strong suicidal thoughts. Um, so I've definitely seen an increase in severity of symptoms.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I appreciate that.
There are a question on your private grant funding. I notice it falls off on the west side from nineteen to twenty-one by about, hmm, three hundred and eighty thousand. What's the difference there?
Mrs. others?
Our grant funding?
Yeah.
Well, we had some large grants that were time sensitive and they ended. And we've just not replaced them with anything that is as large. One of them was the system of care and that is outlined, um, in our packet. Uh, and that was to provide services in schools. And so the idea was always we load you up heavy on the front end with money and then you find a way to sustain yourself over time, uh, which hasn't really happened. Uh, I think a lot of it is because we did load up so heavy with free services. Uh, when we tried to shift it toward having people pay for part of the services, they just kind of backed off from engaging in the service.
So that doesn't mean you're not requesting it. It just that you don't expect to receive this type of.
Right. Yes, it has decreased every year. And, and again, we, we are always looking for grants to supplement. When our other ones disappear, we just haven't done anything yet.
Further questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would move that we take this budget item under advisement.
We move it seconded. All those in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Finney County Committee on Aging. I see Hillary. I see at least one board member back there. Good morning.
Good morning. Sherry, our executive director's been detained this morning, so.
Behind bars or she's?
Oh, no.
She may have a couple of different.
Ah, that's true. Yeah.
Wish her well for us.
Yes, I will.
Ready when you are.
Alrighty. Um, well, I know that you received, um, our kind of updates, what we did in 2019, what we're working on in 2020 and what we hope to do in the future. Um, some of the big things that we've accomplished that Sherry implemented was taking bus trips to really different areas of southwest Kansas. Um, a lot of the seniors had indicated that that was really what they wanted to do to, to get together and, um, go different places. So we implemented that probably middle to end of 2019. Um, and then we're continuing that until everything kind of had to stop. But those have been very popular and just coming up with more ideas of where we can go, um, and take them. And then, um, our mini bus, which is, helps the elderly and disabled, that we added another bus line, um, to, they were getting so many calls and getting backed up. So they added another line to get, um, those residents where they need to go. Um, one big change that happened, I think it became effective March of this year, is that the, the hospital that provides our meals for friendship meals, which is at the senior center and Meals on Wheels, um, they increased us from three dollars and sixty cents per meal to four dollars per meal. Um, and then they also stopped, they're not able to provide any of the styrofoam clam shells, any of the milk, things like that that they used to provide. Um, and so that has been an added expense for sure. I know so far this year with just the clam shells, we spent over two thousand dollars to get those out. Um, and since a lot of our Meals on Wheels clients are low income, they're either free or reduced meals. Um, so that's been kind of a challenge. Just coming up with that difference and, and finding different sources of, um, income to, to carry that gap because a lot of seniors can't do that. Um, we're getting ready to get back started slowly. Once we open back up with the seniors, I know a lot of them are, are ready to come back. Um, and then our bus service, the mini bus and everything is starting again today. And then opening up the rest of it, that everyone was eager to get back started and get going again.
Have they started fixing your parking lots yet?
Not that. I know they came and looked at it end of, I think Wednesday or Thursday, but no.
It's on the agenda soon.
That's what, yeah.
And she started tomorrow and they'll seal it probably in a couple of weeks when the contractors started our roads today. And we've been, they'll give you the apartment.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I, this Dave, for those online, a question about your building. You had a little issue with the roof again. Has that been resolved?
We, in the rain that we had about a week ago, um, we didn't have any leaks. So Douglas had it and they told us that they were coming and we didn't see them, but I think they.
Did come and.
Did come and we didn't see them. So, so far, and that's the side that didn't get replaced a couple of years ago.
That's why I raised the question because a couple of years ago, we, we felt it necessary to help you, your budget a little bit with resolving a roof issue. And I wanted to make sure we're, we're good to go.
So far, as far as I know, we haven't had any leaks in that area and hoping it comes.
Thank you, Hillary.
Robert, I might put you on the spot just a second. I apologize. But we had a conversation since this is a county building that maybe it would start to go under maintenance of the county. Have you addressed that or thought about that?
Uh, yes, it is. It will be included with his, uh, twenty-one questions as far as scheduling some maintenance. And as John put it out on the, uh, driveway or the parking area as well. So it seems like there was a retaining, a retaining wall or something that, uh, in your area. I'm trying to remember something else that needed to be, uh, looked at. Just going off of memory, so forgive me if I misstate it, but, uh, but they are looking at it. That's correct.
The point being that maybe under the county's maintenance umbrella, it's one of the buildings.
That would be wonderful. Yeah, that would be wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, Dave speaking and since I'm on, uh, the, the list that's set in on your meetings each month, I'll happily offer a motion to take your budget requests under advisement.
Thank you.
We moved it seconded. No further discussion. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finney County Fair Board. I see Jeremy in the audience working his way up with that. Finney County Fair Board, I see Jeremy in the audience working his way up with that Broncos mask on for those in the crowd. Anyway, good morning, sir.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, good.
Okay, well, I'm here representing the Finney County Fair Board. I'm in my capacity as president, and I think this is the third year I've been president.
That's a lifetime. You must be doing a good job there.
I did not realize that when you got on the fair board, the only way to get off is to die or move away.
Hey, you're not doing neither one, but aren't you trying to skip?
Um, there is a possibility I will be leaving the fair board because I am enrolling in a doctoral program. So nine years of college, I'm gonna add three more, why not?
What have you got for us, sir?
Well, last year, the Finney County Fair Board, we were very excited about, we made a lot of changes. The fair was growing again. The biggest change was, it's been to the livestock. We actually emptied out the two pole horse barns of stalls and created that into a beef pavilion area because the number of beef livestock that has been entered in 4H has dramatically increased. We added a jury art show last year, we were expecting fifty to sixty pieces. It was double that. We actually did not have, we barely had enough space for that, so we were very excited to have that take off. We've done a lot of more, we've done a lot of community outreach events, including quilts of valor, and so we were really growing with that. And then one of the things I was most proud of is when I was growing up, the fashion review, because there's various 4H buymanship programs, we moved them from an off-site location where they were not having a lot of attendance for spectators. It was not, it was not what it used to be when I was a kid. It was in the grandstands, it was a big deal, everybody showed up. We moved it back down to the stage in the main building and had excellent attendance. Our concerts were better attended, the carnival was up by a third. And then we had a whole Saturday of events that we were planning to expand this year even further. We even had this, last year we even had the soil tunnel come from the state to encourage, teach someone about conservation. So things were, have been going really well and moving in the right direction. Barbecue competition was wonderful, turtle races, mountain busting, of course, everything went well. This year with COVID-19, we're making some tough choices. So the plan is, a lot of the stuff that we had lined up and planned for this year, the antique tractor pull, the car show, we were doing some more outreach to the community, we were having more events. We're working with more people to bring cultural events down to kind of celebrate our cultural diversity. That's all gonna be put on hold until 2021. We will not have a carnival this year. Honestly, there's like five or six carnivals that travel the state of Kansas right now because of the changes in the laws and the regulations since that incident happened, the Surratt on Kansas City. Right now, I know of two carnivals that have filed bankruptcy, I, because of the number of cancellations. And for us, we don't know how you socially distance with a carnival. I mean, especially with the screaming, the yelling, and the occasional vomiting. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work. Actually, that's one of the things to my nephews, I tell them, okay, here's the deal. We're gonna ride all night until they close, or one of you throws up and then it's over. We have yet to go all night. But, you know, right now, I think what we're looking at, and we have an emergency meeting Tuesday night, when I get, we probably sent off the Zoom, I think we're looking at an exhibitor-only fair this year. You know, you've got 4H kids, you've got open class exhibitors that have been planning for things and planning for the fair and want to have them shown and judged. We will do the judging and the entry and everything else, but it's, we're not gonna have the concerts. We've already talked with the promoters, and we've already paid, you know, the deposits and everything. They will carry everything over until next year. So it looks like a lot of what we had planned for this year that was gonna grow and build on last year's success will be held off until 2021. But we will still have a fair. I think our goal is that, you know, the kids have been working on their projects, it needs to happen. This also has taken a hit to our outside revenue streams. Right now, with the number, with a lot of our, a lot of our sponsors are small businesses, or they're ag-related, or they're oil and gas-related. And so we're not going to be asking for sponsorships this year because those industries have taken a hit. Plus, we really need some of those sponsors to continue to buy the animals in the premium auction so that they can make, the students can make the money back that they need to pay for their animal this year and purchase next year's animal. Last year, our auction brought in over a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, which was phenomenal. So we're gonna focus on getting these kids financially, the students financially whole for this year. And then next year, we're gonna blow it out, and we've been working, we've added Roxanne Morgan to the fair board, and so we've got a lot of really great ideas and outreach. We're also kind of moving, we've, we've realized that while we have a small fair board, we have tons of volunteers. So Roxanne and I are putting together a plan to kind of move to a, a fair board is more of an executive board type mentality with lots of volunteer committees. Because people don't wanna go to meetings all year long, but they will gladly volunteer to help put something on. And so that's kind of the direction that we're moving to. So it's, this year is gonna be a much smaller event, and next year is gonna be blown out as hopefully COVID-19 is gone away.
I might point out, I am also kind of the county's representative on that fair board, and we did have a fantastic fair planned. It's gonna be a great thing, and hopefully it'll all transfer to next year and will surprise y'all.
I was excited, we even had a milking parlor coming. I mean, we had, you know, barbecue competitions, grilling demonstrations. All the events for Saturday was gonna be a huge family day down at the fair.
You're gonna have to make a choice on Saturday which event you're gonna get, because it was a full day, it was a good day.
Yeah, but it's, we're facing difficult times right now. And for us, we don't want to become a, you know, there's, we have a lot of limitations right now. And the worst scenario would be is that we hold the fair as normal, and then it becomes a point of transmission for the community, and we don't wanna do that.
All right, questions and comments for you.
I'm just glad you're planning on continuing the exhibits for 4H kids, you know, because they're, it extends months in advance. They've got a sizable economic investment in their hands right now. They, they need assurance that they're gonna get some type of return.
Well, and there's, there's a lot of fairs that are just outright canceled. And that's why we decided to move up our meeting to make this decision because we want people to know that there will be something, you know, there will be some exhibits. And we're gonna continue with the open classes, especially in the static events, because there's a lot of people that, you know, they show their gardening projects, or they've got their baking, those competitions, we're gonna continue that. It's gonna be different, but there will still be judging, there will still be awards, so.
Mr. Chairman, this isn't a budget question, but what are the dates of the?
It is the week of July twenty-sixth.
Week of July twenty-sixth.
Yeah. And the way we're looking at probably structuring it is, that week goes, we start taking exhibits in on Sunday, and it goes all the way through until teardown the following Sunday. Because of the COVID-19 testing, we will not have the stall barn. We don't really think we can stall animals anyway, because then you have families down there, you have kids down there, and the kids don't social distance well. So we're gonna probably set it up to where each day of the week will be a different judging event on both the static side and on the livestock side.
July twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chairman, I know that these fairs are very important to each individual community, but is there any visions for regionalization affairs? I mean, why should our winners, the grand champions and so forth, have to just go off to the state fair? Could we not be the equivalent of the state fair for this region? So I wonder, is there any discussion of that?
There is some, and I, there is some discussion on that. And I think going forward, we may move that direction because we are already seeing the merger of extension offices. And in fact, this year, as you know, Finney County's Extension Office has merged with, or is getting ready to merge with Scott County. I think the first thing you will see is the merger of the extension offices, and then eventually you'll start seeing merger of the fairs. But we're already starting to share personnel and knowledge. And for us, last year, we even shared panels from Scott City because we didn't have enough panels for the goats and the sheep. By the way, their panels are much nicer than ours. Our panels cost six thousand, theirs costs twenty. So, but I, I think we are moving in that direction. And I view our fairs, you know, we are the largest fair in the area. And as you see, some of the smaller communities are not able to host a carnival. They have a very limited number of exhibits. There's, one of our neighboring counties had six animals enrolled, had six animals being shown and sheep, where we've got, you know, a hundred and twenty. I think things, I think that things are just gonna naturally have to move that direction. The first thing for us is that we need to make sure that we have a successful county fair that not only celebrates agriculture, but celebrates the diversity of the community. And as we, as we grow and attract that, then I think we wanna make sure that we look healthy and strong enough event-wise to attract the smaller counties to merge with us.
Ian, no further questions, good, because he's hit his ten minutes, so.
Okay, it's not hard for me to get to ten minutes.
Any further discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we take the fair board's budget under advisement.
We moved it seconded, all those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on the list is the Finney County Library. I see Pam coming forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So in the packet that I provided, there is a copy of our full strategic plan. If you would like a brief copy of the strategic plan that is much shorter, I do have one if you would like it. But we're really proud and really excited about our strategic plan to be able to move through the next three years. There is, there are three notes I'd like to make on the request that we made. The first one is that the 2020 year-to-date does cause our cash balance in the future to look way out of proportion. We have received three quarters of our appropriations this year. However, we have only paid out one quarter of our appropriations, so it does show quite the difference. Our estimated increase across the contract with LSNS is also estimated past 2021. The contract does renew for 2022. The other thing I'd like to report is that on our state funding, that is lower this year because of a calculation issue on the state level. And I am working on trying to get those fixed, trying to get the correct number. We should have received around $10,000, and we only received around seven. So hopefully, we can get that rectified and get a new, another check. With COVID-19, my staff has been home, and we have not stopped serving our community. We do quite a bit of virtual programming. We've got storytimes for kids, kind of a reality break time for teens, and then lots of resources for adults. If you have any questions about those, I'd love to share that with you. It does not look like we will be doing much in-person programming for the rest of the year, but we will continue the virtual programming. And once the staff get into the library again, we will be able to increase that. So we're really excited about that, too. We do plan to continue our virtual programming past this pandemic.
I might commend you on that. My two-year-old granddaughter was a regular until the COVID-19, and so she'll be glad. Sounds like a year from now when that takes over again, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. Pam, just, and first of all, I appreciate what all of you are having to go through. And I know my wife had to figure out a different way to return her books and so forth, but she's figuring that out. My question is, with regard to the management company, what is LS?
LSNS Library Systems and Services.
Yeah. Are you, or have you received good support from them through this COVID situation as far as things that you were needing, special items or protective equipment or things like that? How has that relationship worked with the management group during this time?
They have done, I believe they've done a fantastic job. They have ensured if we do not have access to or any supply of protective equipment or wipes or things like that, they have made sure that they have a supply chain that can provide that to us. Currently, the county does some of that providing already, and so we have a decent supply to start with. But the mask that I'm wearing today came from LSNS. They have continued virtual meetings with the directors and shared information about COVID. They've helped with lots of the phasing plan to get back into the library, get the staff in, and start holds pickup, and then slowly getting people back inside the library in a safe manner.
Well, I'm glad you're getting that support from them. I would expect that, that is good to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave for those who are online. And also, in the interest of transparency, served as an ex officio member on the library board. However, also for people to understand, when it comes time for their budget considerations at the, at the library board level, I, I remain completely out of the picture because we're gonna see that, that budget request here, and I would see it as a conflict if I sat on the library board budgeting session. So what I'm seeing today is somewhat new to me. We've not been meeting, Pam, a year ago, we were short on appropriated funds from the contract with LSNS.
Yes.
And they were kind enough to write that off. I see a substantial, if you will, jump in the request this year. If I'm figuring it right, about eighty-eight thousand, almost eighty-nine thousand dollar increase. Is that, is that because of the LSNS, their, their charge going up? Or are we doing something new and innovative that our taxpayers need to know about as we take this request under consideration?
So the contract that continues through 2021 did have an increase for every year. Because of the calculation mistake at the beginning of 2019, we did not see that increase. They were willing to write that off, like you said. So we are actually making up a two-year increase this time.
Okay, that's what people need to understand. If we were short, they, they suspended, that's the wrong term. They said, we'll not take away the services LSNS provides. And then the county needed to consider making some adjustments, and that's where we are today.
That's where we are today for 2021, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I might point to that, we have a mill limit of 1.9, and that's probably why.
Well, we were not.
Did we not hit a 1.9 mill?
No, we did not budget 1.9 mils. So, and I'm assuming that, I'll turn to Robert, that this year's request fits within the 1.9-mill limitation, does it not?
I don't, I'm not aware of that yet. Do I do not have the certified?
That's correct, we don't have or, or assess the values and whatnot all finalized. This may need to be adjusted, Pam, so don't be, don't be surprised, I guess, if we have to make adjustments. All right, thank you.
Derek?
Pam, how many full-time employees are contracted with LSNS?
Including myself, there are eleven full-time employees, I have two part-time.
And they, they supply all your benefits, health insurance, what?
We are technically LSNS employees, we run the library for you.
Eleven full-time, you said?
Yes.
Okay, further comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, Dave speaking, and I will offer a motion to take the library board's, the library budget presented by their board under advisement.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. I would second.
We've moved it seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, carry. Russell Child Development Center. Scott from the audience coming forward. Is Diana on the phone by any chance? Diane, excuse me. Good morning officially.
Good morning officially, guys. How are we doing? Good. I think Deanna is on the phone. So, and I'll take the majority of it, then I'll let her fill in if any, any comments or questions that she needs to answer for you guys. I'm Scott Kudrowski. I'm the director of the Tiny K Program. And this ask is not for Russell Child Development Center. It's actually for the Tiny K Program, which is a program of Russell Child Development Center. And so, as you know, Tiny K is part C of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We provide free developmental services for children birth to three in their native language, in their natural routines. So we're going in and doing physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech, language pathology, social work, nursing, family service coordination, vision services, hearing services for those children and for those families in those natural environments. Liam, you guys have this handout, correct? You're looking at this handout as well that you have, bro? I just will go through that just a little bit. The, the important thing is that the second page is what I wanted to hit on. Where you guys can just kind of talk about what our program is a little bit. We do have 26 staff members that work for us, all master level or higher individuals that work for us. Doing those direct visits typically pre-COVID-19, those visits were happening in the natural environment, which is where typically developing children are or would be going. Now that COVID-19 has been gone, we've not skipped a beat. We are doing all of our visits via Zoom or some type of tele, telehealth services that we're doing. And we've not missed visits with families. We're still doing all of those visits with families. I'm very proud of our staff for that. The evidence that we have, there's just an incredible amount of evidence that continues to show that children with severe disabilities, early intervention can reduce future reliance on social services, enhance the family's capacity to meet their needs and maximize a child's lifelong adaptive capabilities. What I like to say is that we work with families to get those kiddos school-ready. And along the way, we build the family's capacity to be confident and competent in childbearing and to help meet their own child's needs. We help them learn to advocate for themselves, we help them to help problem solve. And really to be self-starters that can really catch fish, rather than, we don't want to give them fish, we want to teach them how to catch fish is what, is what we do. We really coach families along those ways. We really value that parents are the first and best teachers. And so we partner with those families and we really build their capacity up to meet those outcomes. We did travel just in the Tiny K Program last year. We traveled 151,000 miles and did just over 16,700 visits last year face-to-face, covering the 13 counties that we cover on our Tiny K Program. We do, we do exit about 24% to 25% of our children as age-appropriate, not needing any further special education or not needing any more support and entering school as age-ready. Over the state, that saves about $2.8 million annually. Down on the bottom left-hand corner, you can see all of the free services in the green that we offer for families. Keep in mind, these are free services, as I mentioned, PTOT, speech, language pathology, early childhood, vision services, hearing services. All those services are for free that we do. On the very bottom, that's what I like to highlight on the very bottom there. It says for every dollar that we invest, the studies are now showing that you get about a $13 return on no need for further special education. Less work with your social services. All of the, all of the negatives that come along with those social services, we, we are helping those families navigate those systems and not meet them as much. I did highlight our newborn follow-up on the next page. That is a service that's, it's not a Tiny K function, but they work very, so closely with what we do. I think it's a fantastic program. We actually partner with our large hospitals, Kearney County, South Coast Medical Center. And then, of course, St. Catherine's is where we started this off. We actually have three full-time nurses that go in and they are actually staff on those, with those folks. They're able to go and they meet families. If a child is born, they're able to meet those families at the hospital and partner with them. If they get shipped, like if they go to Wesley or they go to Kansas City or they go to Denver, we are in contact with those families, constant contact with those families. We work with those delivering hospitals to know when those children leave and when they come back. Then we're able to prime, plan those visits so we can meet that family right when they get back because there's that support that's needed for an infant that may be a preemie or micropreemie is, is very high. And we're able to meet those families and help them as they come back. And then we every, we're there with them every step of the way. That picture up there in the top left-hand corner is an amazing picture. That's a, that's a child that was born. That's his first day he was born with his guitar. And then that is a picture when he was one years old with, with the same guitar on there. I just love that picture. It's an amazing picture. As you can see, this, the graph in the middle, we are continuing to serve more and more children. Our Tiny K Program serves the most children we've served in Russell Child Development history, 635 unduplicated children. None of duplicated children that we served last year. As you can see, Finney County is our largest county served. About 50% of the children we serve are in Finney County. We've been here in Finney County. This is our 50-50 year. We'll be celebrating our 55th year here in Finney County. We're really proud of the work that we do here and it's always been the center of our, of our work here. We also do free screenings for families. We, we screened a little over 300 children last year. And about 140 of them did not need any further evaluation. We're able to refer those children over to other partner programs. Parents as teachers, Healthy Steps, Early Head, Early Head Start. We're able to refer those folks there. Then we get down to our budget as we work through there. I wanted to show you that graph of the way things have kind of changed in the last 10 years. We still have a funding gap of about 21, 21% funding gap that we have to fundraise for. And we have to, we write grants to fill those gaps. We work with, with other personal people that fund, do personal donations for those. We write to United Way. We have a great partnership with United Way, with the Seared County United Way and the, and the Finney County United Way and other foundations and other grantors that we work with for that. The last page kind of talks about other counties and what they're doing, what our ask is for Finney County this year. It's the same as it was last year for that ask. I would just say, and of course on the back, there's an organizational chart if you guys have questions about that. I would say that we, we have really answered the call when it comes to COVID-19, you know, when it comes to supporting families. What an, what an unprecedented time we're in and being able to kind of switch on the fly. One week we're doing what we're doing and the next week we can't go into homes anymore. And that's really what your bread and butter is and really having staff try to learn that. We had staff that hasn't learned Zoom and had staff that had learned video teleconferencing, that kind of stuff. And they really did respond really, really well to that. And we really were able to give, in my opinion, great services to, to those families that really needed it. And it made a huge difference in a lot of folks' lives, especially here in Garden City. So, we appreciate your guys' support and I'll take questions if you have any.
Questions, comments? Start with Lon over here this time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. I have two questions. One is related to what you just ended with. With regard to the telehealth. And it seems as, as I've heard some anecdotal information, that some of that could continue on. But that a lot of it needs to get back to the, the caseworkers being in the homes so that they can be with the parent, with the child and so forth. How do you see that in the future? And I know that's not a specific budget question, but how do you see that going forward? When there needs to be some of that personal contact, Rob?
Absolutely. Well, and, and first of all, I think we've learned a lot. I think everybody can say we learned a lot about this. I think we're going to try to take the best parts of it and, and move forward with it. There's a lot of research that, that telehealth in early intervention is, is pretty darn successful as well. So I don't think it has to be a rush back to, we want to go back to the way, the way things were. I think it's a good blend that we're going to come back and look at what families does it work for? What families does it meet their needs? You know, intervention can happen when you're, when you're working with the parent as the, as the first and best teacher. Intervention can happen whether you're face-to-face or not. It, it really is, is a useful and good tool. It's when you're looking at when do you come back and how do you come back? We have been at work and, and our friends at KETE and KITS, which is the Kansas In-N-Out Service Technical Systems, have really helped those partner with how do we go back and how do we go back safety, safely to keep our staff members safe, to keep our families safe. Because we are seeing the youngest and most vulnerable folks, right? And so when you think about that, that touch that we have with them and then you go and you go to another family and how do you do that safely? Really is a case-by-case kind of a discussion. And then what meets their needs and what keeps them the safest and keeps our staff the safest.
Thank you. And then my other is, is related to budget.
Yeah.
You're still associated with Green Bush for the administrative services and so forth. And I see that the operating budget is 436,000. Is that still going well? And that's maybe more of a question for Deanna, but from your and Deanna's positions, is that the relationship with Green Bush still worth the dollars you're spending?
You want me to answer that, Deanna?
Sure.
I would say in, in the 436, so you know, that's not all Green Bush dollars. That's, that's just operating, that's, yeah, that's, that includes Green Bush. That's everything from computers to pens to, to. No, you're okay. No, that's, Green Bush would love it if we would pay them that much. But no, they have been really, really fantastic to work with. The, the Tiny K Program is so different than what a school district does and the funding is so different. You know, we were talking about patchwork funding a little bit ago and, and I believe Larry was, was commenting on that, the patchwork funding. That's all we do, right? We pull in funding from here, we pull in funding from here. We hope this grant comes through. We hope this funder comes through and we patchwork it all. Green Bush understands that because you have to dabble in Medicaid. You have to dabble in KSDE through categorical aid. They understand that and they're able to help us with that so much. It really has been a great relationship with us. We're able to get them out here face-to-face whenever we need them. They're able to help us with our hiring, with recruitment and retention, really partnering with us through that. So I've been super happy with them.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. And, and thanks for the clarification on the operating budget.
Yeah, no problem.
I need clarification on the budget. You said you're going to request the same amount as last year?
They requested that much. We didn't give them that much.
Well, no, the actual was 110.
But they requested more than that.
They requested 160. Okay, so you're, you're requesting the same, I, I, oh, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Okay.
You're requesting the same amount?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. And that's, and that's based on.
Also, but I understood, you know, your personal services, that's a 17% increase. If you go from the actual to the request, that's
in.
Personal services on the expenditures, under expenditures. I'm looking at your, this sheet, Scott.
Okay, I don't, I don't have that with me. I am, so you're, that's, that's the one I don't.
Put it on the screen, sir, if you can see that.
This is what I need Deanna McNutty to report. She, she, that she answers all of my accounting questions, but.
The, from million seven to two point.
Correct, okay. What that is, that is, that is an increase of, that goes from an actual, that goes from actual to budget. Now, keep in mind that the budgets are, the actual is how many, what we actually spent on employees, right? And so then the budget, we talk about how many, we have to, we, we have to have, we have two open positions, three open positions right now. So that is in that budget. So that's the, that's the biggest difference right there is the open positions that we have. We have a physical therapist open position. We have a speech, language pathologist open position. And we have an early childhood special education open position. That's in the budget to get those. I would love if we could fill all three of those, Larry, but I don't know if we'll be able to find a physical therapist. We still have to budget that, but it doesn't come in. But then you don't get the backside of it either, which is the categorical aid reimbursement, which is the Medicaid billing for it. And so your expenses look like they're up, but your revenues don't go up either because you're not able to employ those folks.
Thank you.
No problem, no problem.
We have extended your 10 minutes. It didn't matter, please. So, if there's not any further questions, we have a motion to accept this.
Clipper, I'll let you take this budget for Russell Child Development Center under advisement.
This is Lon. I would second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. I appreciate it as well.
We'll do one more before break. Southwest Development Services, we have Mark in the crowd and he's working his way forward. After that, we'll take a break.
We've done a lot of them. Good morning.
Good morning.
With everything else that's going on, I got a notification this morning on the Weather Channel that today's the official beginning of hurricane season. I will be as brief as I possibly can. I'm not going to go through the entire packet, but I will hit some points here. SDSI, Southwest Developmental Services Incorporated is the CEO of the Community Developmental Disability Organization for 18 counties. 13 here in the southwest corner of Kansas and five around the Great Bend area. We have seven staff in, in this office here and two staff in the Great Bend office. We, we do, our board of directors is made up or allowed to be made up of one individual from each county we serve. We do have some vacancies right now. We serve a little bit over 1,000, almost 1,100 folks right now in our service system. We provide a network of service providers. We don't provide the direct services, I think as you all know, but we do have a, a list of affiliates who do that. We do complete eligibility determination on individuals. We inform individuals of all their service officers and providers. We do at times have folks who are at a service provider now and decide they want to change. So we go through that process with them as well as folks coming off a waiting list when that happens. We perform annual functional assessments. We do quality assurance reviews on the services that individuals receive from their service providers. We also assist KADADs in managing the waitlist. In fact, we just recently, last week, got an email that we reconcile that waitlist, our waitlist that we have with theirs because it's a statewide waitlist. So we all just make sure that there's a reconciliation. I'm not sure how many times a year, but it's several times a year now that we, that we do that to make sure everybody that thinks are on the waitlist is actually on the waitlist. Local finance plan, we have, y'all have been on the commission for a few years. So, you know, I realize it's been a year since I've been here. But local finance plan is, is money that we use from county money and state aid money that we share with our affiliates. We pay it out for transportation mainly. That's a big bucks that, that go out to them. It helps them provide services that, that they may not be able to with Medicaid money that they've received. They've not received a lot of rate increases over the years that I've been around, which has been almost 29 years now. But, but we, we do think this helps them out and we do appreciate the county support that we've received through the years. The request this year did go down some for each county and for Finney County is down about 5,000. We do have a total, we, we request $11,032 on the CDDO administration and what we do, our contract with you. And then that portion I just talked about that goes out to providers, the 174A12 for a total of 185844. Last year, it was 19630 and we received $95,000. So there is a listing there of all 18 counties we serve and the contracts, the requests that we made last year, the requests we're making this year and what we've received in the contract. In Finney County right now, there's 373 individuals living here who are receiving services. The county of origin for those individuals, we have 360 individuals that, their county of origin is Finney County. And I'm going to also say that this comes from the state of Kansas database. I'm not going to claim it's 100% correct, but that's the best information we have. So that's the best we can do at this point in time. There is a page that has the, the, and I'm not sure what all you have, if you have our, you do have our, okay, page five. Our local finance plan and the use of those funds. You can see in 2019, $573,016 was paid out to providers. was paid out to providers for transportation. Uh, forty-five thousand eight seventy-six was paid out to Medicaid ineligible case management payments, that's a case managers uh, could, and, and that's not funded by anybody other than us. And then adult services, we do have seven individuals that are receiving services that are tier zero, they're eligible for services in the state of Kansas, but they're not eligible for the Medicaid waiver. So we pay for some services. We do a needs-based assessment on those individuals. Page six in the packet there, I hope you have page numbers on these. Okay, that is a list of our providers. The city in which our corporate uh, office is located because a, a lot of these provide services in more than just that city, that county in which they're, they're uh, located. Page seven really is not changed, uh, we've, uh, other than the top uh, paragraph there that has a thousand seventy-six individuals we serve, uh, eight hundred, or six hundred nine individuals receive residential bail and supports and three hundred twenty-one receive case management. Well, then I do want to bring up because it does affect, it does have an impact here in Fenny County is on page eight, our HUD housing. In Garden City, you can see we have seven group homes, we have nine or seven apartments, setting complexes. Uh, so these are separate HUD corporations, but they do consolidate into the SDSI audit and into our financial statements that, that we uh, on a monthly basis and present to our board of directors when we have meetings. So you see the number of individuals there uh, that are in uh, our HUD housing here. Without this, it is low income housing. Without that, I'm not sure where they would stay in, in Garden City or uh, liberal because we have them down there as well, so. I'm gonna stop here if that's okay, because I don't want to get too long on this.
Mark, you mentioned, uh, is there, is there the, the waiting list? Do we have a considerable waiting list here in Fenny County?
Oh, yeah. Hey, page ten does show that. We have three hundred sixteen individuals in our eighteen counties and that's out of four thousand one hundred nine individuals statewide. And this is as of the date, we put this together, which page eleven is off the K Dads website that shows the waitlist and uh, the number of individuals that are in services today across the state. So yeah, we, we have, we put this together again, three hundred sixteen. We did receive some appropriations last year from the legislature, so we were able to get, I'm thinking about thirty folks off the waitlist in our area. We actually were pretty high as far as the number from the statewide waitlist. We had a number of individuals uh, more than proportionate to our uh, area. But it goes by a when are you eligible and when did you sign up to get services? That's all it goes by, date, so.
Not need is versus just.
No, they haven't figured out a good need because even though you have a tier one that may be medically fragile, that may need support for almost everything in their life, you may have what we call, and these are tier fives, that is the lowest uh, as far as reimbursement for the providers, but they can be challenging too, just because they're getting around, they're doing things and, and somebody has to help them out.
Mr. Chairman, Dave with a question mark.
Yes, sir.
On page six, if you could back up to that.
Sure.
You know, over the years, as I said on the, the Board of County Commissioners, the question that's been asked from time to time about duplication. We just had Scott here on behalf of the Russell Child Development folks right ahead of you. And then on your page six, uh, I see that you also fund something at Russell Child Development. So for the purpose of clarity, Scott was here asking for funding for Tiny K. Can you tell us on your page six what you fund at Russell Child Development with funds that are appropriated to you?
Russell Child Development Center does case management. And what they tried to do to begin with, and we were fine with it, was case management just for their individuals and that age group. State of Kansas and licensing folks decided that wasn't good enough. They decided that, hey, if you're gonna offer case management, it has to be wide open for everybody. So with that, uh, we do have some case management services that they perform, I think is, is where that funding comes in.
And so the funding you're asking for today, that's, is gonna be designated to go to Russell Child Development is something different than what Scott was asking.
Correct.
That's my point is that this is not uh, redundancy, it's something different.
No, it's not a duplication.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Another question. Uh, Mark, I, I noticed you have a, a column or line for, on your revenues or fees. Do you charge for any of your services to people that are able to pay you or what? How do you, where do you derive?
No, the only fees we receive when, when we do the annual functional assessments, the state of Kansas does pay us for each one of those who are waiver eligible. So we get C D O, our funding from the state is C D O administration and that is a total that, that is prorated out, that total is prorated out to the number of individuals per C D O area. And then each C D O gets funding, those fees for each annual functional assessment paper form.
So it's not from any of the clients you go?
No, no, that comes from the state.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Further comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lon. I would move that we take the Southwest Developmental Services budget under advisement.
The whole subject? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor with the motion, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Owen, thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
At this point in time, we're gonna take recess. Ten minutes, I'm encouraged, so no, no later than ten fifteen, I will reconvene.
It's amazing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you this day? Good, hopefully. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Economic Development, I'm here to introduce Lana here in a minute to give all of the numbers. But I guess first of all, I want to thank you for continuing to support us. You know, I think we've made a fantastic team. Lana, Nicole, Shannon, and part-time with Mr. Cottrell are doing a hell of a job. But they couldn't do it without the cooperation of our four partners. You and all of your professional staff, City of Garden City, City of Holcomb, and Garden City Community College, all working together. When we go to these other communities, they say, "How does all of this work?" And we said, "Well, it works because no one's worried about me. They're worried about us." And it's really worked out very well. And because of that, we've been able to add to the valuation of Fannie County, where unfortunately, a lot of counties around us losing oil and gas valuation has really been hurt. But with it comes, with that success comes some hassles. You know, Lana and her team have brought a lot of new businesses to town. But with that comes a demand for housing. With the demand for housing comes a need for childcare. So all of a sudden, you take off economic half, you become a housing person. Take that off, you become a childcare. And we're doing this on a continuing basis. And we're covering all the bases again because of cooperation and also because of tenacity. So as we present our budget, we think we have been good stewards of the money that you have given to us. We've tried to minimize, and yet our job gets bigger and bigger and bigger. A year ago, we had some talented staff that left. We elected not to replace them. To this point in our budget, we haven't replaced them. We did bring on contract services using Steve. And it's a fantastic way to fill a gap because we get tremendous talent at a reasonable rate. And that's really what the balance is all about. So I guess we would ask you to consider the numbers that Lana's going to present. And more importantly, we want to say thank you for all you've done so far.
You might have just upped your bill.
My bill might have gone up?
Yeah, he's getting it back.
It's part-time help.
Good morning.
Good morning. So yeah, we can start with, we did not increase, we did not increase our ask from last year, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Larry Jones. So that you don't have to try to do the math yourself. We did leave all of the asks to all of the entities the same for the next year. So actual expenditures, we see, again, the majority of the increases are in the primary goals, which we've described many times to you. Those are the actual activities. Those are the things that our organization is charged with doing. We put those expenses into the primary goal expenditure lines so that you can see what we're spending on actual functional, functional work. And then the only thing in the fixed expenses is our building itself, utilities. My salary from executive side is in, is in those numbers as well. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer it. I did include, because I know that you guys do like to look at the priority budget performance. So I did include that again for you. And as you can see, for 2020, we estimate 8% will be spent on administration, 15% on community marketing, 27% on community development, 18% on workforce development, and 32% on project development. And even with the shift, obviously, to working remotely for our office, we did go on remote operations. Everyone still worked. We had full access to our computers and were able to do everything that we could do in the office from home. We don't see that that's going to change significantly. Administration costs may go down nominally just based on some utility savings that we experienced while we were working remotely. But that should be about the only, about the only difference. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have supporting data in there and that we've, that we've talked about previously. These are things that, that we've presented to you before. But this is just kind of a compilation of those items for your review again. And as a reminder that these are definitely indicators that Fannie County is absolutely getting the job done and, and creating the kind of growth that every community in Kansas would, would like to have. And we did include also this valuation chart that I think is really important to recognize where we would be had we simply sat stagnantly as our oil and gas and the state-assessed utilities valuations went down. We would be in a much, much different position than we are today.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a, and this is Lana for those on the phone. I don't have a budget question, but it's on your page where you have, that's headed, projects recruited by Economic Development. Can you provide us a brief update on Starbond and Empirical Foods?
Yeah, on, just those two projects. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner Fishney. On the Starbond, I don't really have a significant update for you on that. Obviously, they have turned in plans and so forth to the city of Garden City. So our role in that has, has diminished quite a bit since they're at that point in development. We do know they have, they have done some preliminary dirt work and that type of stuff. They are required by the Department of Commerce to either begin construction or provide an update at some point. So certainly we'll, we'll stay involved, but I've not had any, any communication on that. Empirical is moving along again. All of their plans have been with the, the city of Garden City. Right now, the primary focus is on the wastewater piece of that and what that looks like exactly. Empirical has looked at multiple options. There are, there are opportunities for them to do much like we did with the Dairy Farmers of America plant, where they do a pretreatment of water before they deliver it to the wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, whatever steps they take internally before they release that water to wastewater to the city makes a difference in what it costs for us as the city to take that in and treat it. So that's pretty much where we are right now. We're working with the engineering companies, going back and forth to really determine what works best there. And for the long-term goal of having full water reuse, it's important that, that we really pay close attention to that portion of it. They also have had a delay in getting workers out here. They, they did want to be moving dirt long before now. Unfortunately, a lot of their construction crews are from the South Dakota area, Iowa and South Dakota, and came from areas where there were pretty significant outbreaks of the COVID-19 and weren't able to dispatch their, their contractors here. So hopefully, that one will continue to move quickly once we get folks mobilized.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alan is still stuck over.
Alan is still stuck in Ireland. That's correct. And they've not, they've not released those flight restrictions yet. But he has been, despite the time change, which can be a challenge because sometimes I'm calling him at 1:00 in the morning his time. He's been really nice about that. But yeah, it's, it's been a challenge. But certainly, I think, as everybody who's been up here has said, we've all learned to figure out how you do things remotely and figure out how you use the telephone.
I have a question not budget-related also, Lana. The webpage that you have has a counter on it, does it not, tells you how many people check your webpage?
Yes.
I'm curious about the, the living document that I keep advocating people turn to. Do you have any sort of account? How many people are looking at that, how to open properly?
Yeah, so I don't know if Nicole's actually tracked that specific item. So she just said that it's, that's Nicole speaking. She manages the website for us. And she said it's an average of 15 a day that are accessing that document.
All right. Thank you.
Question. I gotta ask a question.
Answer. It's okay.
Somewhere, I can't remember where I saw it, but the current unemployment for Fannie County. Did you have a, I looked through the years.
You're going to have it in the next, in, in the next, next presentation. Be patient. It's going to be great. You're going to love it. But it's not time yet.
Okay.
Well said. Lana and Bob, you've, we've always struggled on long-term funding for Economic Development. We got kind of shot out of water on sales tax because of our county limits. Have you guys come up, we're still working on it, I'm sure. Any ideas you want to share yet, or you want to keep them under the hood quite for a little bit?
I think our goal would obviously find some kind of a long-range deal to where we didn't put you in a bind trying to share the piece of mind that you're trying to share here. Sales tax always seemed to be the obvious one. The alternate one would be to take that valuation and say, "All right, if the valuation increases, then Economic Development gets a little bit of an increase. If it goes the other way, we have to take a hit." We've got to find some way to balance it and to quantify what the works we're doing. Sales tax is obviously one piece that works. But because whether it's in downtown Vision or wherever else, it's good for Fannie County, good for Garden City, Holcomb, all the way around. So we would love to have it. We had always hoped that maybe, of course, the Canyon deal might work. But unfortunately, there were lots of people raising their hand. So, and to just go out, you know, we would have a little more confidence now if we went for a sales tax. But we're at a maximum or, you know, there's not much room left. So I think we've earned it, but we don't have a way to ask for it. So we're going to keep going and begging each year until we do find that answer.
Bob, knowing you, you'll keep on this until you find a solution. So I appreciate that.
We're going to work on it.
I would also mention that we did take in, if any of you watched our board meeting last week, our, that's one of the things I will mention that I am extraordinarily impressed with. Not only my team, who has really stepped up and figured out how to keep our public meetings well in line with the, the state requirements, but our Board of Directors, who may or may not love technology as much as, as some other folks do, have absolutely stepped up and figured out how we, we maintain the, the public nature of our meetings. And we've done so extraordinarily well, to the point that Nicole said to me last week. She said, "We got to figure out how to keep our own, our own Facebook page live with our meetings." You know, we've always been in the city building, so it's live on Channel 8 and the city streams on their Facebook page. But we have gotten so much viewership to those meetings, which either says that people are really bored and maybe that'll go away as they can get back out, or that they're truly are interested. So either way, we're going to make sure that we continue to provide our meetings to the public in as many venues as possible.
I'm afraid that camera's going to stay here in our meetings as well, so.
It's okay. You guys will get used to it. But yeah, so that, that's been very positive. But if you didn't watch our meeting this last week, we did receive a $5,000 contract with Haskell County. They specifically reached out and asked us to work with them on some housing concerns and some infrastructure development concerns that they had for their county. So we did agree to a contract service with them for the total of $5,000. I would anticipate that if that goes well, they may very well choose to do that again in the future. Again, for specific, more specific items. But it gives them the opportunity to get the professional assistance that they need. And certainly, anything that's good for Haskell County is going to be a benefit to Fannie County as well. So we're glad that we were able to do that with them.
All right, we're at the 10-minute mark. Any further questions related to the budget request from Economic Development?
I'm going to take it by generator's license.
For a second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
We have some applications, more than application.
You do. So you have one Community Development Block grant application for your review. It is for RP Hospitality, one of the hotels here in town. And their request is for $35,000. And it does allow for four, for full-time equivalency positions to be retained. And we would recommend that you approve this in accordance with the parameters that you set forth, which also mirrored the city of Garden City's. The city of Garden City has exhausted all of their funds that we started with. They ended up lending a ton, a total of $507,000 out from their side, which is, it's tremendous. And we are very glad that we've gotten the approval from the Department of Commerce to allow you to utilize your funds to continue to support the businesses of Fannie County through this crisis.
Would you please, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Are there, and I see that there were some incomplete applications and did not meet the criteria, et cetera. But there's no others in the pipeline right now that we are aware of, or there are?
We still have the ones pending where we're waiting on additional information. And then, but we move them rapidly. So that, you know, as soon as we get the application, which sometimes we have to assist, obviously, with that application because not everybody deals with government speak every day. So the application isn't as user-friendly as it probably could be. But as soon as we can get them into the pipeline, we are tracking them as they hit. So even again, if they don't have all of their information, we want to make sure we know they're out there so we can continue to assist them through it.
So this is just clarification because we're showing here on this list pending is the RP Hospitality that we were being asked today. So the incomplete are pending? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm sorry, yes. Pending is pending your approval. They've, but they've already qualified. They're pending your approval. My apologies. I didn't understand your question to begin with. So I'm sorry. Yes.
I'd expect in the future.
So incomplete applications are still in process. They haven't dropped off completely. They're just things that we're having to work with them. One of the requirements of the application is that each of their employees has to fill out the employee certification form. And as you can imagine, for some of our industries that have had to put people on furlough and so forth, that's been a challenge to get some of that paperwork. So we're as patient as we can be with getting them through the process.
When I saw incomplete, I thought they were dropped off because they were.
I'm sorry. Words matter. I apologize.
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you for asking.
Because we may have those coming before us for that remaining dollar amount.
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Clifford, a move to approve the application, RP Hospitality for CD EBT or CBOE. With the terms as specified, an alternative one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Larry, beat him to it.
Yeah.
All those, any further discussion?
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
Lana, RP Hospitality doesn't ring a bell, but would that be about where the, formerly the Red Baron would be located?
No, that's the Magnuson, actually. And they actually made it under the cities. They, they actually got their application in before the city. So RP is by there. It's the.
The one out near the.
And I don't remember what it was called when the sire's owned it. Maybe it had a number?
Okay, so I don't remember either.
I'd lie if I tried to tell you.
Thank you.
Uh huh, you're welcome.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the improvement, the lone, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation?
We do. And I'm going to let Mr. Kreitzer start by telling you why we have a presentation from the Board of Directors.
Yeah, one of our charges is to promote Fannie County, Garden City in this area. With all of the free publicity we're getting, being number two in the state with testing results and a lot of people shooting at our part of the state and the industries that are basically here, we really judge that we're going to have an impact, a significant impact potentially on our future when we go around. And we anticipate that perhaps some communities that are east of here in the other state of Kansas may find that it's an advantage to shoot at us in terms of what we have done. And so we need to make sure that we know and understand exactly what these numbers that we keep looking at mean. And so we asked Shannon to start investigating and try to find out what the relationship is between the total positive tests that everybody keeps score with. What does it mean to us and what does it mean to the reality? And how can we stand up and try to explain to other people what's going on? So because of that, we've put together some numbers. And that's the awesome thing about our staff is that they go out and they have the ability to generate this. And so we ask you to watch along and see what they did.
We have a more current version that Dory emailed you. Sorry, we did, we did tell you that we would probably be updating it if we got additional information in before the weekend, and we did, so.
Well, I see a puzzled look. We're looking for those on line. Dory, the camera is going, is facing us. Is there a way to let the camera onto the screen so that the public can see this presentation? I ask, that's, that's not a fair question. I have puzzled.
There is a way. It's not going to be very graceful.
And you do have, again, you have it, so it can be published. You guys can certainly share it as well.
This will be on your website?
It will be on ours, and you have it available to share as well. Yeah.
So maybe this is not all necessary, but she's working on it.
That's okay.
I'm buying over some time while he's strolling for the updated stuff.
All right. So again, as, as Bob mentioned, we're providing this as of what, what impacts we're able to measure. As of May 28th, 2020, we recognize the importance of compiling data that can be shared in a meaningful way with our business community and certainly with our residents. It's important from our standpoint that we share information that is, that, that folks can understand. And we try to make it as clear as we possibly can. We went through just a brief actions to date that you are all very familiar with. But again, this really, this document is not so much for us as a community as it is for those from the outside who are looking in on our community. So we did go through the actions today, including.
Page two.
The actions, yes, including the actions that were taken by your, your commission and by the Board of Health.
Just a second. Are you running the slideshow here? She's, she's on the next page and then.
Action today, this is what you're.
Yep. So we went through, again, we went through everything that, that has happened and that you guys have done so far. And then the next page, we, we talk about where we are today. And again, the, the order was originally through the 31st, now through June 8th, as of last Friday. And that means that for Fannie County, all businesses except bars and indoor event spaces are allowed to open. Some obviously do have restrictions under the 1.5 phase. And the other real important piece of this is the limited crowd size that's stayed in place with you all staying at that, at that 1.5. Larry, this is where you got your unemployment rates?
Yeah.
And so when we look, yes, when we look at.
I'm sorry.
Where we, I'm sorry too. As, as we look at where we are, obviously, unemployment rates are one of the quickest reactions that we see as, in a situation like this, whether this, you know, whether this had been a political crisis or a virus. crisis or a virus, as it was in this case. But as you can see, as we talked about early on in this, the fact that we are a production economy versus a service economy is very clear in these numbers. The further you go east, the more you get into service economies, especially that northeast corner of the state is very heavily on service, and you can definitely see that. You also undoubtedly see the oil and gas impacts when you look at the Ellis-Russell-Barton-Rush County area, and then down in Sourd County. Again, you can see pretty much exactly where the impacts have been. Finney County's rate did increase to 5.9 from about 2.9, I think, is where we were the month prior. So we have seen an increase. We would anticipate that this will be a short-term increase. We think the majority of this is probably going to flesh out in retail workers and restaurant workers who were forced to go on to unemployment but will have the opportunity to come back up as soon as their businesses are reopened. Next slide, please. And then this map is the change in those unemployment rates. And as you can see, nobody has green, but it's nice that they threw that in there so that you had some hope. Someday we'll get to green, which is where you're actually reducing in change. But again, you can really see the difference in how the different areas of the state were impacted from actual employment numbers. Any questions on any of that? Thank you. All right, and then that next page, now we get into where we're actually looking, as Mr. Kreitzer said, at where are we really today as a community, and what should people know about Finney County as they look to shop, as our businesses look to reopen, those types of things? So one of the first things I did, this is actually from the CDC document dated May of 2020, that they just put up on their website a couple of weeks ago. And this piece is really important, where it talks about the percentage of positive tests can be used as an indirect measure. So are you testing enough? And according to the CDC, 80% should be negative to show you that you're even testing enough, period, people. So I think it's important to know that. The timeliness of the results is another measure, and I think, I think we can all agree that in Kansas, those have stayed pretty true. Those two-to-three-day returns have stayed pretty true, so I don't think that's a huge challenge. But the next slide explains some of those reasons why adequate testing matters. So this may sound really obvious, but counties with the highest testing rates have the highest positive cases, and there's no question about that. Entities with widespread testing capacity, for instance, the military, have results that are directly in line right now with the CDC's epidemiologic estimates, which you're going to get to see, how we utilize those to come up with and extrapolate some of this data for you. Kansas as a whole has done very limited testing. We can use the CDC epidemiologic estimates to extrapolate our current cases, which you're going to see. And cumulative tracking does not provide an indication of active or contagious cases. Cumulative tracking, which is what the state of Kansas has opted to do, just shows how many cases have been there over time. It doesn't show how many are currently active. So the statistics we've utilized, 35% are asymptomatic carriers. These are, again, are from the CDC's best estimate. 0.004% of cases result in death. The contagious course of the virus, the estimates range from seven to 10 days, and you'll see why that matters. And the most critical cases are still predominantly reported in the elderly and those with underlying health concerns. And the disclaimer, as with all data sets, there are outliers. So this is certainly not meant to diminish the impact that this virus has on some families and has had on families who have lost loved ones. We don't mean to diminish that in any way, but it's important to know that there are always outliers, there are always cases that don't fit in with the norm, but that doesn't sway what the norm is. So that's why we feel confident in providing this data set to you. Shannon?
Good morning, Fishers. Mind if I stand over here? I'm more of a pointer person when I have these presentations. So the first thing I wanted, I wanted to just briefly mention and long talk about a little bit is we're talking about that positive rate, and can a positive rate be an indicator of our current infection rate? And the first thing we need to think about is, well, it depends on how our ministry does test rate. If we wanted to know what the birth rate of Finney County is, we could go to the, or we could, we could go to the hospital, into the maternity ward, see who's coming in, give them pregnancy tests, and you're going to find out about 50% of the people coming into the maternity ward are pregnant because they're coming in for labor, and the other one is husband, right? So that doesn't necessarily make sense. At the same time, we could have the biggest outbreak possible, we could have, we go from, we have like 1,400 total cases so far, we can get 2,000, 3,000 active cases in one week. But if we do 10,000 tests or 15,000 tests, our positive rate will go down, even though we have a huge outbreak. Also, at the same time, you could think, if we're only testing people with positive symptoms, even if the number of symptoms people who go down, go down and down and down, but we're only testing, we start testing 100 people, then 20 people, then 10 people, but we're pretty sure that they're already screened in because of the symptoms, our testing rates can be high, even though the total infection rate is going down. So one of the things we need to think about when we're talking about this thing is, our rate is useful at times, but sometimes we need to think about what's behind that rate. And that 80% that the CDC was talking about in their document is if we have adequate testing of all populations, not just symptomatic populations. So, so the first thing that I have here is this is a data set that Google, Facebook, and Carnegie Mellon has put together. Nothing surprising here. This is just the new cases as of last weekend in Kansas. Now, here's something that's interesting. We don't, nothing too surprising here. Let's go to the next slide, and here's the testing rate. Anyway, it looks about the same, right? We have the cases, we have the testing. This color scale is moving off. High here is 50. We're testing at a much higher rate here, in the back of hundreds per thousand people. Here, they get the dark colors, well, but they're 40, 60. So we are testing a little bit higher. But we did see before, the infection rate that we saw, the positives, and the testing kind of line up. Well, here's something interesting. They're also tracking COVID symptoms, and this is Google, Facebook, and Carnegie Mellon. So if we go down to the next slide, and there's a lot of data here, this doesn't mean nothing, this means they don't have enough data to report. Let's just look at this thing here. Riley and Gary County, if you hover over this, which you can't because it's just a picture, but if you actually go to the data, they're between 0.8 and 1% of the population have COVID positive symptoms. Now, let's go back, go back up to testing. Nope, they're not getting tested. We know they have symptoms, but they're not getting tested, so they're not getting new COVID cases reported, right? So one of the things I could think about is we can't just look at the positive cases and say, this is how we know how bad a community is doing with the number of COVID positive cases. So one of the ways we can kind of estimate this and see what's going on in the state is we can start with, look at that fatality rate, right? Because nobody's going to, we all have different testing methods, right? How we're administering the test, who gets into that test, there's all the differences there. But when we talk about fatalities, for the most part, nobody's going to argue that a better person died. I mean, they don't have to where that person was from and all that, but we'll just, we'll just say, let's look at some fatality rates and get an estimate of what our positive rates are going to be. Because the CDC, like we saw, says that on average, right now, the best guess, actually, I can go down a couple of slides, I think we actually have a slide that says it now. Oh, it's after this. So spoiler, the CDC says the fatality rate right now, best guess is 0.4% of COVID positive people with symptoms and have COVID positive symptoms ends up in fatality. So let's take that with our data that we have for our counties and some other counties here. Notice Finney and Ford County where we've had a lot of tests, we've had a lot of positives, they're true positives, but we've had a lot of tests. The light blue is the number of positive cases. The dark blue bar is if we take that fatality rate and say, well, how many cases of COVID would we expect in that community based on the fatality rate? What do we see? And you know what? In Finney County, Ford County, we're right pretty much on line with the amount of cases we've seen and the fatality rate, we're pretty good. I mean, we have a pretty good guess from this data that we're testing pretty much what we expect. We like to see that. What about in some of these other places? Central County, Johnson County, Waduk County, that's reporting 700 cases of COVID. Well, if you look at their fatality rate, we should be, they should be like, we'll just say, Johnson County, they should have had 15,000 positive cases tested, but they don't. So does that mean, just because they don't have this test here, does this mean that they actually don't have these pieces? Probably not. Yeah, yeah, okay, so go to the next slide.
I don't think that slide's in there.
Oh, it isn't, okay.
Sorry.
Well, okay, so there's one slide that just showed you this fatality rate and all that stuff like that, so that's fine. So we were looking through and saying, well, is anybody else testing like this? Is anybody, I mean, where the fatality rate is pretty much matching up with the positive rate what we expect from the research? Is anybody else matching up like that? And it turns out, the states aren't really. You can see Kansas, where there should be way, 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 way more positive cases than were getting reported based on our fatalities. But if you go look to the military, it's lining right back up again. So, and that's because probably anybody who's getting anywhere close to COVID is probably getting tested. So they're probably getting those positives again that don't have all the symptoms and all that stuff. So the first thing I'm trying to say here is, our numbers are probably a true count of COVID. The numbers that you see in Riley County, the numbers you see in Johnson County, the numbers you see in all these other places, probably are severe underestimations of the true numbers of COVID cases. And so that's one thing we have to think about when we're reporting this data, is we're getting punished, punished, we're reporting our accurate data where other places aren't, because we have a much more robust testing system in place here where we are testing more people more often and with those symptoms. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Now, how does this, how does this relate? If we go to the next slide? Okay, so this is, so you remember when New York Times deemed us for traveling around? Remember that article where they said, where's everybody traveling? And they're using the cell phone data, and you can see the maps of everybody, everybody wants your Kansas moving around? Well, the good thing is, they're reporting more stuff now, so we can actually access this data. This is the data from this last week, last week, where people are traveling into Finney County, right? And no surprises here, right? This is pretty much our trade area that we, when we talk about our trade area, we actually have some nice, good, free data that tells us that we are tracking significant numbers. This is if 1% of the population or more came in. So go to the next slide, and what's really interesting about this data is this is, this is like a graph of how many people are coming in, and you can see our shopping cycles here. I mean, you can see the weekends, weekdays, and you see our tracking down and then back up, right? So we see that our visiting into the county has changed, like you would expect, and it started, it started, they backed up, which is good. The problem is, let's look at the next slide, is, the problem is, we're starting to get reports like this, that says, this is from Cake, that says, more than 1,400 people have the virus in Finney County. Remember this have, this is slightly reporting, it's had, have or had. This is, this is making it where our community is starting to get these sorts of numbers where it looks like we have way more active cases just because they're reporting total cases, and nobody is pushing up that active cases number in an official capacity. So if we go down, and this is what Bob talked about, go to the next slide, down, please. So we're having contractors that are working outside cities that are having concerns about people from Finney County working in other communities and bringing that virus up there. Or we have downtown businesses, like Sheila has, where she's got direct evidence where people are saying, don't shop in Garden City because there's so much COVID. We don't think there's any more COVID here than there is in any other community, we just did a better job of measuring it. So what we need to do is think of ways that we can address the fears of our community where we've measured well, they haven't measured well. And we can go on to the next slide. And so what we did is, this blue bar here is the cumulative number, and this was as of last Friday. This is the cumulative, this is the number that everybody's reporting. We have a couple other bars here, these orange bars, I scroll like one scoosh, so it gets this scale down here. One click, one click down so I can get the.
There you go.
So these orange bars are people that is, it's after seven days after they tested positive, and then this green ones are 10 days after. So they test positive after seven days or after 10 days, if you look through research. Because we're not asking at the time of that test, we're asking when the symptoms started, we are assuming the symptoms start at the timing test, according to the KGA numbers, we kind of have a span where we can say, after so long, these people kind of phased out. So who's active, who's an active case? And then one other thing, I put these darker ones in, we also know from the CDC reports how many people are asymptomatic. They will, they have, they have COVID, and they will never develop COVID symptoms. And that's about 35% of total infections. So I bumped up these on 35%. So even though everybody's reporting that 1,400 number, if we look at right now, as of last weekend, really, if we include the asymptomatic cases, there's about 100, or about, somewhere between 50 and 150 active cases of COVID. And you would think, hopefully, most of these people are in self-isolation in one way or the other. And the really good news is, if you look at our data now, for the weekend, it will change as we get more data, we'll go a little update, we're actually down to like about 50 to 70 people active in the community that have active an infection. And so what does that look like? That means between about one, one out of 300 to one out of 600 people in Finney County have an active case, where they would be able to spread the disease. And so when we're talking about this, so how many people are shopping at Home Depot or shopping at Sam's? It's about 200 people. If you go look there, they're clicking, they count how many people coming in and out now, they have a little cell phone thing, say, is that Sam's they have, it's number 208 at Sam's inside the building there. So if we're saying 1 out of 600 people have an active COVID case in Finney County, that means if you go shop at two or three stores, you'll probably run across one person, which isn't a lot, but that still does, when, as I said, we do need to wear masks, we still need to do social distancing. But it's not, but it's not like this area is crawling with 1,400 cases where everybody is in. So this is some things to think about as we go forward with presenting how our community is doing, and we are seeing direct effects of how they're reporting testing. And there's some, maybe some ideas on how to go forward and look at our numbers as we talk about. And you can definitely see, we do have, you can even see with this, how the peak kind of went on. And hopefully, if we're good and we continue on our way, hopefully this just will keep on going down, we don't have a second wave, and we'll be good, so. Any questions, or do we have anything on it?
I think the other thing would be the total number of people that ended in the hospital, and then, of course, you touched on the death rate of.
Yeah.
Eight, and here again, eight people died for whatever reason, and they also had COVID.
Right.
It isn't necessarily they died from COVID.
Right. But, yeah, and but if you look at that normal fatality rate of somebody with symptoms, and then the fatality that's associated with any treatment, we have evidence that our testing that we're doing is catching almost everybody that we think has it, or we have cases, we have direct evidence in Riley County. What's 1% of Riley County? They have 4,000, right?
Six.
Whatever, I mean, that's a big, and they have hardly any cases. But we have some data that has evidence that there's a large population that has a symptom right now. So, so we just need to be cognizant that, that we're doing a good job, we're measuring what we're supposed to be measuring, not everybody's doing that, but that doesn't mean they don't have it, that just means we've done a good job.
And I would say, that one of the things that, back on this slide, sorry, it's a few slides back, but on this slide, that where we had the various counties that we pulled out, one of the things that I think is really important to understand is that, one more is that Coffee County, if you look at it, you say, what happened? Why did, you know, Coffee County should have a lot more cases than they have. This is the importance of cluster identification and sharing that cluster information. Coffee County was a senior living facility that got impacted. Obviously, they either did not have community spread come out of that, or the folks who had got exposed either were asymptomatic or chose not to get tested. The evidence would point to, they probably kept it very controlled when they identified the cluster was in a senior living facility. So they didn't get to the community spread, they didn't see the number of cases that they likely would have seen. But that, what that indicates was, is number one, that people who were impacted by it in Coffee County were in the elderly age range, so they were more impacted by the virus than folks who are young and healthy when they get the virus. But also, why that's important is because predominantly in Finney County, where we have seen the cases has been in our younger adults versus our older adults. So that does make a difference, that, you know, your health going into the situation makes a difference. So that does make a difference, that, you know, your health going into the situation makes a difference in the outcome, obviously. So, um, just, just wanted to, to share that. And that could also be a, a reason why our, why we're not matching up to our estimated cases, um, is largely not because they don't exist, um, but probably more apt that our death rate has actually been more, you know, a little bit under because we're not exposing a lot of our folks who would have pre-existing conditions.
Yeah, Seward County is inverse of everybody else on the.
Yeah, so they, Seward County actually has, wow, what, last time I think they only have two fatalities? So that'd be, that's interesting where they are a little bit lower, but again, they have, again, the more, the more workers you have in your community, the younger population tend to be more healthy. Um, so that might be one of the reasons why we see that, that, well, for Seward County.
And the other thing that can be a challenge is how deaths are reported. So if a death takes place in your hospital but is not a resident of your county, if that death is being attributed to your county anyway, even though they're not a resident of your county, that could change that. Obviously with Seward County, they do bring a lot of folks from the Panhandle area that, that use their healthcare. So it, you know, there could be some challenges in that as well, that's creating some, some technical challenges. In hindsight, this data is going to be great, but, um, for right now, I think it's just important that because we do have these good, strong CDC estimates, um, that we can utilize, we can start to really make some decisions about, did it work? Did what you do, you know, what you chose to do, did it make a difference? And, and I would suggest the fact that we didn't see, um, the cases increasing at the same rate they were increasing at, you guys did your job. And you should, you know, you can look at that and you can see that it made a difference at the right time, you made that, that decision. So this again is rolling data, we can provide this update to you anytime that you want it. If you, if you call and say, hey, shoot us that chart again, we're happy to do that.
I appreciate this presentation I'm going to do. I would suggest though, that without, without a little bit of written analyzation of your charts and data, might go over a lot of people's head. Uh, you know, when you explain your data, it, it made sense. So I guess I would suggest in addition to your program of a little bit of analyzation, just like you presented to us.
We can absolutely circulate a white paper that supports this, just bear in mind.
You're preaching to the crowd here, I hope, I hope the eastern half of the states looks at this, just as you pointed out from the, which, uh, newscast.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't need that kind of publicity, so if we can get this information out. Other fellows, comments?
Cool, well, go ahead, Bill, I'll read.
Uh, as a small employer, uh, I'm glad to see these numbers. I mean, we've had problems bringing patients back into Penny County. But really, is what you've shown us is that their risk of exposure to someone isn't any different in Scott County or current county or Craig County on a population basis.
I'm glad you brought up Scott County. Actually, if you go look at that, that percent of population that we either is an active case or asymptomatic, uh, active case, the percent in Penny County is the same as the percent in Scott County. The number is different, but that's because the population is different. And that's, and again, that's something that people have to realize, that the rate is different than the total number. Um, and, and so, and, and what's even worse for Scott County is, they're so small, they have one more person die in a week. We shouldn't be going up there because they don't have a much higher ratio than we do. So, so yeah, I mean, that's kind of part of this is, we have to understand this whole ecosystem of data reporting and all that stuff where we're confident in our numbers. I'm not confident in any other people's numbers in Kansas.
Yeah.
Two, two things. I noticed, uh, on the national reporting, they were talking about, um, cell phone tracking. And they zeroed in on the, you know, the pool scene and like those lines, and they tracked those cell phones. And it was amazing where they all went, and I know, I was watching the map fairly close, and there was a few couple dots that came all the way back to southwest Kansas.
Sure.
But also, uh, how do you get the right, good news out to the, I guess, news services, it's the only thing I know, uh, you know, how do you, how do you get this news out to people that are, are concerned?
Obviously, we'll make this available to the media outlets, and, and I think that to, to Commissioner Dries's point, we'll, we'll do some, some more whitepapering of it, if you will, to, to include more information that doesn't require a presenter, uh, to share the data. But yeah, I think it's, it, we have, you know, we can certainly share it, we can get the word out there ourselves. Um, obviously, it's one of the reasons we wanted you all to see that information is because you have been saddled with the decision-making throughout this, and you need to, you need to have a better understanding of exactly how that impacted, what the outcomes for us, so, and it's good for our businesses.
Like you said, Mr. Jones, it's, it's, it's not we won, the message isn't we won, it's we're winning. The steps that we're taking have made a difference, we still need to take all the precautions. But looking at this, it shows a, we're winning kind of a, a message. So, and that's a good one that I think people can carry with.
Yeah.
All right, we need to move on.
Do you guys have any questions or anything? Don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proactive is great, appreciate that. Uh, next on the agenda is some project updates from Mr. Hillman on Farmland Road, Jenny Barker Road. And sure, I thank you for being proactive and helping us with that.
Okay. Jenny Barker Road. You're seeing, I, I think I shared bid tabs. Probably, I shared everything that I think City Commission will see tomorrow as well. Low bidder was Spore Land Development. A little over $7 million. The project was, there's two different projects in there, maybe, maybe three. I, actually, I don't think the water was built into that at all. Um, but one of them was the Eastside Drainage Project was the big pit and some drainage off from, trying to get from Menard over to the pits they're going to dig. And then drainage off of Jenny Barker Road. And the Jenny Barker Road project are two separate ones, so they, one of the pages, they separated the projects. Basically, Jenny Barker Construction Project was 5.19 million, Eastside Drainage was 1.583, for 7.068 million dollars worth of project. Um, and then I, I guess, there was another 294 for extending water line along Jenny Barker to tie. I think that's, there at Shoalman is a water line and what they put into Chapel Heights is, crosses Jenny Barker up there on the north end. So those are those projects. Rightaway has all been purchased and ready to go. They were getting permits in every day for, last week and starting this week are ready to move utilities around on the Jenny Barker project. Assuming the city approves bids tomorrow. The contract, what I understood is the contractors are ready to begin tomorrow. Are ready to begin as soon as possible, so those contracts are signed, so I wouldn't be surprised that we start seeing equipment being moved in once they have the okay. And then start. First part would be drainage pit and drainage extension before the railway starts, work starts.
Drainage pit, they're reclaiming the one that's already there, are they not?
That old hole's pit, they're going to expand it and.
Modifying it.
That may be, that will be a benefit to us. They've, uh, they're okay with accepting some of that drainage that we have on the south side of Shoalman problem. Um, where we had some flooding a year, a couple years ago. And getting that, letting that water drain into their pit too, so. We, um, the drainage project will bring large pipe down Tenderloin and T, or Quarterhouse Drives. Um, and with some inlets. So they will collect some water off of this, the road ditches.
Does this affect the drainage ditch at all, or is that?
No. No, it's not tying anything into the drainage ditch, it's all going into their, um, city pit, which is a detention. I think it's, I think it's designed as a detention, or retention, not detention, it'll keep the water. Um, I would imagine there's some emergency, there may be some relief there, but for the most part, just containing and holding all of the water.
Hold up a picture here, this picture there, that's not framing to the drainage ditch?
That is existing Walmart ditch, they're rerouting that.
Okay.
They're taking the bend out.
Yeah, they're making it just go straight across Jenny Barker's, that, that curve that was in there before. So the, um, there'd be a little bit of drainage off that end of Jenny Barker into that, but for the majority of Jenny Barker and the T-bone stakes area that we're going to pick up, part of, is not going into the ditch.
Mr. Chairman, the, the question I have, John, that I'm getting asked about every time when somebody mentions Jenny Barker Project, and I, I don't know what page this was on, but is the traffic signal. And there's an estimated cost of $400,000. Do we know whether KDOT is going to permit that to be done? Uh, because it looks like that would fit within the budget.
It's planned in the budget, in the project. Whether it's allowed by KDOT yet is still unknown.
It's still.
As far as I, I know that they don't know that KDOT's going to allow it.
I keep getting asked that question probably once a week.
It's still up to KDOT, hopefully they'll let us put it in.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, yeah, I'd imagine, I think that's all I had to say on that, or update. Unless you have any more questions that I could.
Go ahead. All of the land that needed to be acquired now is acquired?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Uh, there's a sales oversight committee meeting at 2 o'clock. I think they're kind of requesting whether we as a commission are kind of okay with this presentation so that the city can move forward, is that correct, Robert?
That's correct. Uh, there was a difference in bids as, uh, John pointed out initially. A difference being, uh, bid came in just a little bit under what was anticipated, is that correct, John?
Yeah, um, not very much under, but it was under.
Correct, and I think one of the questions were the sales tax committee is going to be, is the amount that is under what was anticipated or budgeted for the project, would it be appropriate to apply that to the city's waterline project? So that's a, that's a point of discussion that, that will happen at 2 o'clock.
What's your thoughts on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Seventy-six thousand, they want to.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have any major thoughts on the 76,000 specifically, but, uh, first of all, I, I'm pleased the bids came in the way they did, they did, after contractors had been touching base with me and, including, uh, our consultant Wilson Company. And they thought that we would only have two bids and we had three bids and, and, uh, the, the, the cost came in less than expected. And then lastly, and I'll say this tongue in cheek because it can't happen, I'd like to see the 76,000 applied to the fourth lane, but, uh, because, uh, people in my district would like to see that before, but I know that's not going to happen, obviously, so I said that.
Too late for that.
So, I, but I am, I am pleased that the bids came in as they did. And Spore's, Spore's a very reputable contractor too, but I, I really don't have any.
Guidance on the 76?
Who are commissioners of, uh, since this is, uh, a sales tax initiative, that is, what, less than two years, uh, in the making? And with the grocery list of projects that are out there, I believe there's seven projects, correct? I think there's a way that if you, you want to recapture that savings later on within this sales tax initiative is that you can, uh, you can go ahead and recapture that. What I anticipate is that, and assume, is that, um, the city will issue, I'm assuming it's the city, will issue, uh, temporary financing on this. And, and so, I don't think you need, necessarily need to make that decision at this point in time, but, plus you may have some challenges coming up later on this week, or this year, in, uh, so, so revenue receipts.
I'm sure, last three months is surely going to show up.
Correct, and, and so I would, I guess I would suggest that, that, that option remain out there if, if need be. There'll be mechanism which you could, if that's the desire of the commission and the committee, that you can recapture it a little bit later day.
Okay, good advice. Dave? Well, Mr. Chairman, we've heard about Jenny Barker Road in this report, we've not yet heard about Farmland. It's next. So none of this, uh, $76,000 can be moved over to land, it's complete, I mean, one short, one long.
Unfortunately, no, I don't think that's the way that was set up to happen.
Are we, any further questions on the Jenny Barker Road? Let's move on to the Farmland.
Well, if the sales tax doesn't come in as projected, it just means we're just delaying the project until the money is over.
I think that is correct. City's the commander of this, we just got to talk about the Jenny Barker Road, so, and our potential PMS station, so. Okay, John, Farmland?
So Farmland letters have been out, I guess, over a week now for Rightaway. I haven't heard of any, many coming in yet. Although now that process has started, so we should start seeing some negotiation with landowners. And Rightaway and Eastmints for that. Part of that is TP and L property. I think, I don't want to speak too out of hand or out of line, I think there may be some donation of property, but they would like, they've asked to have a tax appraisal done. And so that total value of property before and after the, the Eastmints and Rightaway are gone. And then what happens with that, I'm not sure how that works, but. So part of the project will have extra expenses, project expenses to do that appraisal. And we've, um, reached out to the, the appraisal company that did the last, the very initial appraisal, and I, I'm not seeing his name come up right now to think of who he is. So that, that may cost a little bit of extra there in, in Rightaway project cost. Can't do any movement of utilities until Rightaway's purchased.
Can't bid to the Rightaway's.
Can't really bid till, once we get all the Rightaway, then KDOT will be, will finish up plans, the rest of, they're all but ready to go, just waiting for Rightaway, from what I understand.
This project seems to be moving slow, John, you haven't changed anything since the last report.
Well, the letters went out, so that's a big step, this is part of that process now, so. Now we're waiting on others to come in besides the first. I did take the opportunity to apply for a KDOT cost share for this project. So that, I think that went in, what, uh, on the 15th, I turned it in two weeks ago, or a week ago, Friday, two weeks ago. So far, I haven't heard yes, no, maybe on that, so.
I'm going to ask Lana, you, you're very hands-on on this project as well, do you have any comments or observations that, on this as well?
Yeah, just, we really appreciate, uh, John's work on it, we, and we worked, um, and helped him with the grant request to make sure that we beefed it up as much as we possibly could to show the importance of it. Yeah, I, I would agree, I think the, the time lags that we experienced on this project have cost us money, absolutely. It slowed the process and unfortunately, we know that contractors are, are certainly in a position to charge a little more right now. So that's a challenge we're facing with this project, but, uh, again, we're pleased to, to have it moving forward. It's an extremely important project and will be even more important as we continue to see the growth in the industrial quarter there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I will admit, I, I've learned a lot of what not to do next time on projects like this, so.
About to do.
Yeah, um, and hopefully that'll increase that, I mean, for as long as this project's been on the books and actually kind of. on the books and actually kind of starting headed toward a project, the Jenny Barker project was done in less than half the time. I mean, honestly, and then right of way was, even though they did, we did have to follow federal guidelines on the farmland because of the monies involved, and we didn't on Jenny Barker, we could have done a lot better job with right of way, uh, from the, from the beginning than that, and from, I think part of it was consultant selection and, and staying on top of stuff.
Well, very important project, and we need to get it done.
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question, John, this is, I was just curious, I was driving down South eighty-three today, who's the contractor on all that project down there, they've got a lot of them.
I didn't catch the dirt contractor, um, Adventure.
Lot of equipment down there.
Adventure Corporation, the asphalt companies, the prime. I did, I didn't catch the name on the side of the equipment.
I didn't, I didn't either, Ring of Law and Dust.
Yes, there's a lot of projects, and there's all, you know, two miles over in Fannie County, but, um, they do have Craft Road closed on the west side now. When they get that improvements or what's in there built, they will come up and, and close the TV road on that west side, and that'll probably be closed until the project's completed.
Are they, are they building just another two lanes, or are they, are they going to tear out the old?
Yes, yes, and yes. Um, it'll be just like what they did south.
So it won't be four lane?
It won't be four lane, it's two new lanes on four lane right of way, and that's all we're, with some pass lane, I imagine, a couple passing lanes.
Well, you're going to tear out a lot of good highway that really looked good on one fifty-six.
Yeah, yes.
John, uh, several years back, we denied, they wanted to close the road heading south off eighty-three, and we denied that at the point in time because they're so far done. Do we still need, does everyone come back in front of us to close that road?
They're not planning on closing any roads permanently.
Permanently, they wanted to permanently close the road, so no, not till you get closer.
Yeah, there's no, nothing being closed, even with this project.
They gave up that idea of closing.
I think so, yeah. Um, the, the TV road closure is just for construction.
Okay, this, this was.
As far as, no.
Was it Kenny Land Road?
No, they can't really, right now, that's where the asphalt plant's going, and the storage yard and everything else.
Okay.
But no, there, I, that closure parts have all been, I thought, went away, so.
Okay.
And the plans I've seen, I think it's still, they're still open.
Further questions for John? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And my citizen who was here specifically for fireworks gave up on us.
Somebody that has a dog that doesn't like fireworks.
There you go, my wife is included.
Okay, my dog, uh, unfortunately passed away, so I'm neutral.
The request was to shorten this to four or five days, but, uh, that's not what the resolution says.
Yeah, I think we have, you do have an existing, uh, resolution that provides your guidance. Um, and my understanding is that, um, actually, there's no, you don't have any, um, any need for an action item, but my understanding also, I believe Doria's holdup of the fire chief, and apparently they're leaning forward with what, um, what their intent is on, um, permits and so forth.
Right, they're, they're currently processing permits, um, zoning and, and the fire chief. Um, it's simply because this is a resolution and there's no action to take, if you wanted to shorten that, you, you would need another resolution drafted, and I'm not sure how quickly that's going to be done.
So we can still run off of this, uh, June twenty-fifteen resolution, I don't think needs to change?
Yeah, if you look towards the end of that, it says that, um, it is effective in twenty-fifteen and every year thereafter, these dates are the dates every year thereafter, so if you ever wanted to change those, I think that you would need to do that, well, in advance.
Y'all don't tell my wife that we didn't do anything, okay?
She's probably watching you on camera.
And it is supposed to stop at two thirty.
I'll be, I'll be told that she is. What's your, what's your pleasure, fellas? Do we need a motion on this, or just consensus?
There's an essence of store information at this one.
I think we didn't have it. But I think it's always, it's, it's enforcement issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's the ten thirty rule.
Thirty needs to be enforced.
Moving on. Patiently waiting for hours, Tristan.
That's true. Do you please pull up the treasurer's page on the website? I'm sorry. Okay, Robert is going to pull up the treasurer's page on the website, I just wanted to go over, um, our new digital line system that, um, is actually going to be deployed when we open our office on June eighth. So what we're going to do is this system will, um, allow people to get in line before they come to the treasurer's office, it will also allow them to not have to wait within the treasurer's office, so, um, that will help us to maintain the social distancing that's, that's really been asked of us, um, and control the flow of traffic within our office. So, um, we did launch.
So for, for people that are online, so they could go to the treasurer's website.
Sure, yes, so, um, to, for people that are, um, watching or listening, you can go to finneycounty.org/treasurer, and this will outline our new office procedures. So, um, this outlines what queue list is and how it'll be used, so, um, there, it outlines the ways that you can join the line, what will happen once you join the line, and then how you'll be called back to the office. So you can join, um, by texting, and the phone number is on the website, and it's also six-two-zero-four-zero-seven-seven-two-one-five, and you would text Finney County Treasurer to that website, or to that, um, number, and the queue list would, um, text you back, ask for your name, ask, um, what you're needing, and then put you in line. And there are screenshots available on the website and also on the screen right now to see, um, how that would happen. They can go directly to our website and join that way, um, through the queue list dashboard, and if you go ahead and click there, so, um, actually, I think it's unavailable right now, we don't have the line up and ready to go, but this is the site you would go to. Um, further down, there is actually a demonstration video on what that, what that looks like once you are able to go to that website. Go ahead and play it. Yeah, sure.
Enter the queue list dashboard, this is the first screen you will see, simply enter the information requested. Provide a valid cell phone number with area code where you can be reached by text message. Click next at the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. Select the drop-down menu to answer the question. Must have these documents available for the clerk when you get to the window. Click next. Select the line you want to enter for the services you need, where you will see wait times and the number of people in line ahead of you. Select the service you need today. Successfully joined the line, you will receive a text message notifying you that you've successfully joined the line. Follow the text prompts for a status update, to leave the line, or for help. Wait for the next text message to let you know when you've reached the front of the line. At that time, head back to the treasurer's office to the next available clerk.
What's the lead time, the time you text and tell them?
It's, it's nearly immediate, I actually, we were testing it this morning, it, it's within thirty seconds.
Yeah, but I mean, when they need to be in the office.
When they need to be in the office, so, um, I believe that it, they are texting when they are next in line, they do have the ability to say, I need more time, and so they'll move the next, they'll move back to the, back one space in line. So it, it varies just depending on how many people are in the line and the type of transactions, but they do have the ability to control where they are, and also, if for some reason they can't come in, then they, um, they will be, after ten minutes, they will be sent, um, to a, a separate queuing area, um, and they will have the option to rejoin the front of the line, um, for another ten minutes, so they have about twenty minutes to get there. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Tristan, is that information going to be available other than English on your website?
Yes, yes, um, we actually are, later this afternoon, Sarah and I are shooting a video in Spanish, so it will be available in Spanish as well, the queue is also available in Spanish.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
And I forgot to mention, so, um, when, when people walk into the treasurer's office for the next few weeks until we resume normalcy, um, I will have somebody there with an iPad to check everybody in, and they will know exactly how long it will take, that, um, also, um, customers can call us and be put in line, um, over the phone, and, and receive a text message that way if they're not familiar with the website.
Will we be entering on the new east door, or?
Yes, that's correct, you'll be entering, um, where the new waiting area is.
Excellent. Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Better give Buffalo Jones' smartphone.
Oh, never mind, we're good. County administrative report, update.
Just a brief update on the budget process. Finance committees continue to work on it as you're seeing results of the, um, outside agencies coming in, taking their requests, uh, with that individually as well, just to flesh out their services a little bit more. Put some of the doc, uh, information into the budget document, uh, when we get ready to finalize that we've met with department heads and continue to meet with, uh, department heads as we finish up their, their budgeting process. So we will, we will anticipate that, uh, should by the end of the month have, uh, a budget document, that's what we're working towards, a budget document for you to begin to review, and then, it's your discussion, chairman, who you want to have come in for any presentations. From my past, oftentimes, we, we didn't pull in everybody, it was just those that we had specific questions on, uh, if there's, if there's a reason to raise an eyebrow, so, um, that's continued on as far as our meeting processes in here, uh, beginning the fifteenth, anticipate the doors will be opened, we'll, uh, have, much like we did today, uh, continue on with this process of, uh, broadcasting and so forth, uh, probably have to do a few updates in, in terms of, uh, getting rid of a few trip cords, make that happen, but we anticipate continuing on in that, in that regards as well. You do have a, as Commissioner Greece has mentioned, you have a, uh, sales tax committee meeting at two o'clock. Then as far as the rest of the week, I'm, I'm not aware of any other meetings coming up at this point in time. Doesn't bring it down. Any questions of me at this point in time?
A question, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I know the KC is posting costs, COVID-related costs by county, are, are we going to respond to that?
We will respond to that, we just, it's a time issue. Yes, we are.
Good, thank you.
Robert, I have a question for you regarding continuation of, uh, broadcast.
Sure.
This camera system has, it, it's, it's worked out, but, uh, I would like to remind everybody, the city commission meetings are covered by two cameras, that might be very beneficial here if it's not cost prohibitive, one, uh, as it's now sitting, but also another camera on what we're, what's not in view for the audience out in, in, uh, web land, so, uh, if you could do some checking, have somebody check and see what it might cost to get a couple cameras and how we would sync those together, that'd be interesting.
We, we've had two commissioners been begging for information like that for a long time, so I think.
And Robert and I were just talking about before the meeting, we wanted to get with IT, figure out what can be done, eliminate cords and things, but I was also, just as we were looking at the screen going, okay, can we utilize what we're currently doing to put images on the screen, or maybe there's other options, maybe it's a secondary camera, or it's just a matter of displaying the PowerPoint online in a different way, so yeah.
Well, we had a, we had a discussion as a county commission some year and a half, maybe a go, about bringing technology into this room, and as I recall, it was going to run like fifteen thousand dollars per year for a couple, three years, and we decided that that was a budget buster, and we turned that down, but if we're going to continue to televise, maybe we're going to be forced to buy a little bit of equipment.
Yeah, I, I think there's ways that we can potentially transition into, I think we'll make do with, uh, oftentimes what we have, just trying to refine it as we, as we continue on.
Okay, thank you, excellent. Further questions for Robert? Comments? Uh, at risk, I'll start on first.
And I, I really don't have anything, uh, the, uh, CVB meeting that they had the other day, I wasn't able to attend, and it was a very brief one for them anyhow, and that's the only one I was assigned to. I did meet, uh, Friday with, uh, Bill Clifford and Tracy Mann, uh, through the Chamber of Commerce, and had a brief discussion with, uh, them, uh, but that's about it.
That's your record, thank you, sir.
So I'm, I'm reserving the rest of my time for next meeting.
Okay. Dave?
I'll, uh, very quickly report, had a Finney County Committee on Aging meeting, and they had a couple kind of nice reports, uh, the federal government through the state, through the city, and through whatever, have, uh, agreed for next year to completely, fully fund the transportation bus service, that's going to be some good news. And then they also were the recipients of, I think about sixty-one, maybe it's fifty-one thousand dollars in federal funding to help on the salary offset, so that, uh, as we consider budgets, uh, may be able to, to help them, help us too, so. But that's it, my other meetings, the library has, has canceled meetings, I'm sure we're going to get, get, uh, in the meeting business this, this month, and, uh, local emergency planning committee, I turn to our emergency manager, those have been postponed for a while, but, uh, we'll have one of those some of these days, I'm assuming, so, anyway, that's it.
Uh, I talked to KI Well this morning, seven o'clock, regarding our health board health actions on Friday, uh, the chamber meeting on Friday, as Lana had noted, at the Compass Board meeting, uh, sadly, uh, one of long-term counselors at Compass actually died over the weekend due to COVID-related illness, Lisa didn't mention it today, and enjoyed the SpaceX launch and docking, it was really exciting to see that happen, thank you.
Mary, just numerous emails on, uh, our action as a community health board, and other than that, nothing?
I think we've all had emails. Quickly on the fair board, a visitor Roxanne Morgan, CVB, uh, she's kind of taken the lead on the fair board, as much as Jeremy, uh, they, they, they need to have guidance, Roxanne's been through this helping, but she did their budget for them. I know this could possibly be a conflict of interest since she does, as the CV puts money there, but she's trying to keep herself out of that situation, has staff do it, but long and short of it, uh, without the convention visiting her own fair board's going to be in trouble next few years, we have no volunteers, Jeremy kind of alluded, but he's pretty much already resigned, so, uh, I think it's a good thing, if nobody has any objections, we're going to have to lean on Roxanne and CVB to help with the fair, for at least the short term.
I, I would agree.
Uh, as far as Great Plains, uh, they've been struggling financially, almost ready to fold until now, and all of a sudden, they have all kinds of loans, they're, they're cash rich right now, and so, could, Great Plains is actually on solid footing because of the extra loan work, not, it doesn't pay really well, but it's extra money that's coming in, and, uh, bless their hearts, we don't have to worry about that for, for the near future, so, that's my report there.
Mr. Chairman, I did forget to mention, the special session for the legislature starts on the third, uh, in a couple of days, and there's no guess yet as far as whether it'll be one day, two days, three days, or how long it will be, uh, but, uh, just to keep that in mind and keep looking for the reports coming out of the legislative.
Very fast, my last one, extension. It's been really fast. My last one, extension. Robert and Roger have worked together up a draft for the use of the building. I think that's still in process, bouncing back and forth, but it's kind of getting really close. Extension should have a lease or ownership of the building before long. Anything else in further commission?
Next meeting is, we're doing a weekly?
And budget, budget-wise, do we need a meeting next Monday?
No.
No? Oh, thank you so very much. Be perfect.
We'll have the remaining outside agencies on the fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Wasn't he scheduled on the sixth, because I don't have July, that's.
That's a commission meeting.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, is there budgets?
We may be ready. I don't know how soon we'll be ready to do some departmental budgets. So, well, let's talk about that. So I know that's a holiday coming off of the holiday weekend. So if we're not going to have a forum, we may need to move the meeting to a Tuesday or some things.
Oh, I didn't think I'd be here, but the wedding I was supposed to go to was canceled, so I will be here, so.
I was going to pull off my two o'clock meeting, but my son says he's just fine on the planner. So I will attend the sales tax meeting at two o'clock. Other than that, I was going to volunteer one of you guys. So anyway, anything further?
The July sixth meeting?
I'm okay.
Is everybody okay with that except Larry?
Oh, okay.
Going anywhere?
July sixth.
Meeting adjourned.